I think we're good. All right. Sorry, we're running a little behind, but high school football just started. So you know, the kickoff started on time, but so we're getting ourselves a few minutes away of game. Um, so it's called this board business meeting to order. Um, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Okay, thank you, Ms. Costin. Can I get a second? Yes, Ms. Hirsch. Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you. Cody, Michael Joseph, you with me or no? Okay, yes, that passes eight zero. Okay, um, let's go right into the public hearing and therefore our student government representatives, are they in the room? They are. Come on down. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and meeting attendees. My name is Mitch Goldstein, and I'm the Student Body Vice President. Last month, when I spoke, our homecoming week was coming to an end. Since then, many important events have happened at GHS, all of which have helped foster a stronger community at our high school. At the beginning of the month, the freshman class officer election was held, and at this month's dinner meeting, the new officers were introduced to the rest of the executive committee. They shared their goals for the year, and they were eager to get to work on freshman class events and fundraisers. On the note of class activities, the class of 2024, in partnership with Pizza Post, hosted a successful fundraiser. The junior class president was elated to tell us that the owner of Pizza Post was actually extremely surprised at just how many people came in to support their class. I want to congratulate the junior class on their achievement, and I look forward to seeing what else they achieve throughout the year. In addition, the senior classic noted the changing leaves and autumn breeze and decided to hold a full themed pie and cookie dough fundraiser. The fundraiser was also very successful. I'm excited to say that last week's blood drive was a success. Over fifty GHS students and faculty donated blood. While there are many ineligible students who are interested in donating, I'm optimistic that the blood drive in the spring will be even more noteworthy as students become eligible when they turn seventeen, the age they can consent to donating, and sixteen they can donate with parental approval. Finally, Isabella and I have continued to work with Mr. Mayo and Ms. Tuilada to review the plans for the new student center. The SRF funding has provided GHS with a great opportunity, and we're excited to see how the administration is able to take advantage of that opportunity. We look forward to seeing how they are able to reimagine our main hub, the student center. With these great events, I'm thrilled that our GHS community has been reinvigorated this year. Our school community is once again becoming whole. On behalf of my peers, I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I look forward to seeing you all next month. Thank you. And now it is my honor to pass the mic over to Isabella Giga.
I'm a little bit shorter. Good evening, Chairman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. I am Isabel Giga, Student Body President at Greenwich High School. As the seasons change and beliefs turn red, Greenwich High School students confront a more intriguing future, midterms. Yes, it is in the distance, but student government executive committee is hopeful that we can collaborate with Greenwich High School administration to ensure that this testing period meets the needs of the students. We were grateful for last year's plans, and we look forward to brainstorming what midterms might look like in the year and in the future. Additionally, we have finally put into place a new student government subcommittee structure. Our aim is to increase leadership opportunities and student engagement so that everyone in our high school community can have their voices heard. Our chairs were chosen yesterday following an application process and interview process in a vote amongst XCOM. We made it certain that each nine committees are led by the most successful and qualified people. We are still open to form an ad hoc committees that will go through a similar screening process. We have high expectations for these subcommittees and anticipate that they will become a significant tradition at our school this year and years to come. Though these committees will be a fantastic way to get more students involved, Mitchell and I continue to make an effort to improve our school environment in every way that we can find individually. As leaders of the school, we continuously meet with our esteemed administration and addressing the concerns we have for the high school. Our most recent inquiry, our beloved student center, an acre of space that has been looked at the same for the past fifty years. Mitch and I have met with Ms. Tuilada and shared our ideas as to how the student center should look. We reviewed a variety of different furniture options that'll be accommodated to all kinds of students and in the ways that we can use the space. With the help of the student center subcommittee, we aim to make the student center the beating heart of our institution once again. In addition to this, we have continued our conversations with Mr. Pereira, the Dean of Student Life, in strengthening current flex time and advisory setup. In addition to preparing meetings with Mr. Nannarello, the Director of Food Services, to discuss the current food options in Cardinal Cafe. I can say that our kickoff to the new year at Greenwich High School has been a success. I'm beyond excited for what's to come, and I look forward to speaking with you all again next month. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mitch and Isabella. I want to hear more about the midterms when I get to the superintendent's report because I know that's on top of everyone's mind. So with that, let's go to G E A. Is Lil here? Online? I don't see her. She, we've spent a lot of late nights at RTM meetings, so maybe she needed a few extra minutes.
Or if she could raise her hand if it's not properly labeled.
Dr. Jones said she was planning on being here in person, so why don't we move on? And I think we could always come back to Lil when she gets here. So with that, P T I is Francis here? There she is. Thank you. P TAC, sorry.
I'm even shorter than her. Uh, good evening. I'm Frances Wu-Nobe, mom of three GPS kids and the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three President of the Parent Teacher Advisory Council Greenwich, a nonpartisan umbrella organization advocating for fifteen Greenwich Public Schools and their families. P TAC membership includes all PTA presidents, some of whom you will hear speak tonight, Board of Directors and Committee Chairs for Academic Excellence, ALP, AFTERS, Curriculum Enrichment, Digital Communications, Digital Learning, Directory, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Early Childhood Education, Essence, Facilities, Green Schools, who will also speak tonight, Health and Wellness, Scholarship, Special Educational Services, Special Programs, and Twice Exceptional. If you are ready to be more engaged in your schools, please join your school PTA today. I'll start tonight's remarks to say not once, not twice, but every time and every day, thank you. Thank you to our Greenwich Public School educators, staff, and administrators. Our educators are the only ones we rely on to make learning occur each and every day and to guide and educate tomorrow's leaders. For all the educational professionals in the audience, listening in on Zoom and on the stage, thank you for what you do, no matter the turbulent times. It was so great to see so many parents and teachers at Open House and other school events, all ways we build back our school communities. Turning to hot topics in tonight's consent agenda, P TAC would like the Board of Education to consider the following A's, B's, and C's. A is for ALP. Advanced Learning Program update is on the agenda tonight. After the cohorting approach during the pandemic, we're glad to see more focus on individualized placement of kids into out math, ELA, and science as appropriate for each learner. We're also happy to see this approach resulting in increasing number of kids getting some ALP exposure. We're especially happy to see the ALP Science Program getting long overdue attention. In addition to the enrollment update, we would like to see ALP academic results. We all know that general academic results declined following remote and hybrid learning, and we'd like to see how that impacted our advanced learners. We would also like to continue to see data on ALP enrollments and academic achievement broken out by socioeconomic, racial, and gender demographics. We all know that there has been a gender gap in out math at the elementary level in past years. B is for buses. We believe that busing has improved, but we don't have real data and continue to hear anecdotes of and experience it ourselves terribly late and are missing buses affecting schools, students, sports, field trips, and parents. We share the administration's concerns about what will happen when the Putnam Avenue work starts in the spring and the resulting traffic disruptions and impacts to GHS in particular, with a detrimental cascade to other schools as well. We call on the GPS Board and Administration to get ahead of contingency and mitigation planning while continuing to work on current bus issues. C is for capital budgets. We call on, count on, the BOE to work with town financial leadership to ensure our buildings are repaired, rebuilt, and revitalized. Our buildings are not built for the year-over-year enrollment report or the five-year average or even the ten-year forecast. Our buildings need to be built to serve the town of Greenwich for twenty, fifty, and even one hundred years. Past generations had that vision, as illustrated by how many, how well so many of our current buildings have served the community since they were built and are rebuilt so many years and decades ago. What will this generation of elected officials build for the next generation? It's long past time for a major planned revitalization of our school facilities and to move away from costly unplanned emergency actions to deal with burst pipes, falling roofs, decaying facades, and all the other Band-Aids in recent years which cost even more in inflationary times. Please build for the future today. And for good measure, let's add D for Diwali. For those celebrating Happy Diwali, may the Festival of Lights bring sparkles of peace, contentment, joy, and happiness to you. In closing, please join our November fourth, eleven AM P TAC public panel presentation with our community partners via Zoom and the October twenty-fifth, seven PM Mark Brackett in-person presentation at EMS about emotional intelligence, the key to raising happy, healthy, and successful children. See you there.
Thank you so much, Francis. Okay, Lil's not here, right? She didn't walk in. Okay. All right. So why don't we go into public comment and then she can join or go at the end of that is fine, too. Um, okay, so we have thirteen speakers, so I think we can get through everyone tonight, which is great. First up, Jennifer Bensavango, followed by Katie Yu.
Good evening, Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board, colleagues, and guests. My name is Jen Bensavango, and I'm the proud principal of Old Greenwich School and our four hundred students in pre-K through grade five. I'm here this evening to ask for your full and continued support of the OG renovation project, which you have heard is a request for a safe ADA compliant building with adequate HVAC and air quality. At the most recent BET budget committee meeting, some of the capital projects were referred to as fun projects. I assure you, there is an apparent teacher or student who finds raw sewage in our classrooms fun. The students who came this week normally on crutches and had to climb up and down over a hundred steps a day to get to their third floor classroom didn't find this fun. Nor did their teachers, who have to ensure these children are able to safely traverse multiple flights of stairs on crutches while monitoring twenty-three other children. Nor will their parents should they slip on the stairs during a rainy arrival, because I assure you the liability of a compound injury will not be fun for anyone. It is our responsibility as a town to maintain our schools. The renovation of our school, the oldest school building in town, should be of the utmost priority. As an antique building, its care and maintenance is complex but necessary. Our landmark Old Greenwich building requires your continued support to make the investments necessary to safely function as a twenty-first century school. I do want to remind everyone, Old Greenwich has not seen a decline in enrollment or performance. In fact, we've increased our enrollment from the projections for the school year in last, and based on the continued calls to register as recent as today, I foresee continued growth in our school community going forward. As the instructional leaders of our school, Mrs. Bertram, my Assistant Principal, and I are also quite proud of the academic growth our students have made despite the challenges of COVID. Last year, I was here on my birthday to ask for the gift of a fully funded architecture and engineering plan for our school. We are thankful for the partial funding of this plan. And depending on how late this meeting goes tonight, at midnight, it'll be my birthday again. I once again come to you with a request to prioritize the needs of the students, staff, and families of Old Greenwich by fully funding our renovation in the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed capital budget. Our building committee has already met, and I'm confident our impressive team will present not only, but not a proposal of bells, whistles, and wishes, but a proposal that meets ADA compliance, health and safety standards, and appropriate air quality for students and staff, basic needs in a modern society. Please honor my birthday request and prioritize the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Next up, Katie Yu, followed by Carrie Bisby. Katie here or online? She might be. She's had an email saying that she wasn't sure she can make it, right? And that's why she put in her comments, right? Okay. I don't see her, do you, Katie? So I'm going to assume that her email was, well, that would go into the record. So let's go. Maybe. Okay, that's fine. Let's skip her for now. Carrie Bisby, followed by Christopher Weiss.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Bisby, past co-president of the Riverside School PTA and current P TAC Facilities Committee Member. I'm joined by Allison Moss, one of the current co-presidents of the Riverside PTA. We represent a community of families who value their children's education and Riverside's identity as a neighborhood school where most students live within just a mile. Our PTA is a frequent user of space inside the school. As a result, we are familiar with several of the building shortcomings, some of which, within the context of all GPS K-five schools, may be unique to Riverside. We believe the problems we've observed with the building's age, inaccessibility, and lack of space warrant a proper study to understand the full extent of the building's issues, especially if some impact the staff's ability to do their jobs effectively. We expect that findings from the study would, in the coming years, lead to an actionable plan being developed and renovation and expansion work being done to remedy these issues. Some examples of these issues include accessibility. Our building has no elevator. The second floor, which contains homerooms for two hundred and thirty students, as well as our art and general music classrooms that are used by every Riverside student, can only be reached via two flights of stairs. Square footage per student. According to the facility's master plan, our school has some of the smallest K-five classrooms and ranks among the lowest in square footage per K-five student.
The cafeteria, the Board of Education has noted that our cafeteria measures in at seventeen hundred square feet. When factoring in the size of our student population, that makes it even more cramped than Julian Curtis's, especially during our largest grades lunch wave, which includes more than ninety students. Capacity constraints. Every room and every space in the building is being used. In the span of a day, some spaces are being repurposed multiple times or are being used by multiple instructors across different specialties. Instructors without classroom space. For some in recent years, their space has been a desk along a wall in the media center. Elsewhere, for example, two-thirds of our weekly band lessons are taught in a vestibule outside the gymnasium while PE classes are taking place. All told, while our pre-war school building is picturesque and well-built, it is also outdated, capacity constrained, and for decades at this point, lacking ADA accessibility. While we understand that major funding projects at a number of other schools, like Central Middle School, Old Greenwich, and Julian Curtis, all of which we fully support, already puts a strain on the town's resources. We do urge you to approve the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item in the fiscal year twenty-four capital budget for the building study at Riverside School. Taking the preliminary steps to fully understand one-day remedy.
Thank you so much. You could send the rest of your comments. We appreciate it very much. Next up, Christopher Weiss, followed by David Levine.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Jones, cabinet members, members of the public. My name is Christopher Weiss, Principal of Riverside School. I would like to offer my strong support for the approval of the preliminary design phase slotted for fiscal year twenty-four for the renovation of our school building. With over ten years of experience as the school leader, I concur with the statements of need and issues as noted in the proposed capital budget document on page sixty-nine, which highlights a lack of accessibility throughout the building, including, most importantly, no elevator to the second floor, an undersized cafeteria space with at times well over ninety students during certain lunch shifts, and a lack of program space with no dedicated science labs, common or flexible spaces available for classes or groups. We also have an undersized main office suite with no conference rooms or meeting spaces, as well as some security concerns, including having only one set of locking front doors at the school entrance. In addition, with nearly four hundred and forty students, our building has some of the smallest K-five classrooms by square footage in the district, especially the classrooms on our second floor. Our school also ranks among the lowest in square footage per student, as was noted by our PTA co-presidents. Due to having no elevator to the second floor, all grade three through five students, as well as our K-two students going to music and art, need to go up and down two flights of stairs at least three times a week for K-two and three to four times a day for three through five. Any student with mobility concerns will often need assistance maneuvering up and down the stairs to the second floor. Students on full crutches or in wheelchairs are not able to access the second floor, and if a student needs these items, we will have to hold, we have had to hold art and music classes on the first floor classrooms, which is far from optimal for teaching and learning. If a grade three through five student needs crutches or is in a wheelchair, we have to move an entire classroom setup down to the first floor, disrupting other spaces with other classes needing to move rooms or media space needing to be used for classrooms and causing media to go to classrooms instead of being in the media space. I join with the Riverside School PTA co-presidents in noting that the problems with our building's age, inaccessibility, and lack of space do indeed warrant a proper study to understand the full extent of the building's issues. We expect that findings of this study would lead to an actionable plan being developed and renovation expansion work being done via a major capital project to remedy these issues. While Riverside School is indeed picturesque and well-built, as was noted, it is also outdated, capacity constrained, and for decades has lacked ADA accessibility. While we understand that funding major projects next year, such as JCC, Central, and Old Greenwich are very, very important, we do urge you to approve the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item in the capital budget for the building study at Riverside. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, David Levine, followed by Dinah Ursa.
Good evening, Chairman Stowe, Dr. Jones, rest of the board. Uh, my name is David Levine, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a phased approach to capital for Julian Curtis and also to request that we don't de-prioritize Julian Curtis capital yet again. My wife and her three siblings went to Julian Curtis years ago, and as a member of the PTA and a member of the PTA Building Committee, I can say that the school that my son, who's a kindergartner next year, is going to and that my daughter, who's a third grader at, is in the same condition as when my wife went. And many of you may have been there today. We had this beautiful event called the UN Day Parade. Fifty-four countries were represented. Countries from Syria to Peru, from Russia to Ukraine, and there were smiling faces, and it was a beautiful day in front of a seventy-five-year-old school. Um, now today's also my daughter's birthday, so we're all about birthdays. I did leave the birthday dinner early, and maybe I was a little frustrated that this is my only chance to speak uh, before potential cuts are made to the Julian Curtis budget and was a little frustrated to see JC was pushed behind some other schools for completion. But um, but that frustration's really given way to gratitude. I feel very thankful that I'm able to be here to speak on behalf of my daughter. I really am thankful to all of you. I know that we all are here because we care about our kids. Um, and I'm also really thankful, we live in a town that has a five hundred million dollar annual budget. Over the next five years, two point five billion dollars will be spent in this town. I think we can afford to modernize our schools. That said, I do think budget constraints are real. We've heard other priorities. A phased approach for JC, to me, seems to be a good approach. The only thing I would ask is if we could not make substantial cuts until we have an alternative plan, give some time, the building committee's in place. Let's come up with a complete, comprehensive alternative plan before making significant cuts, and please don't de-prioritize Julian Curtis to other schools yet again. But just wanted to come out and say that and that I really appreciate all you guys do. Thank you for letting me come to speak on Autumn's birthday. Happy birthday, Autumn. Happy birthday to you. And I really appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, Dina Ursa, followed by Jennifer Behet.
We're actually a package deal, so. Good evening, Chairwoman Stowe, members of the Board of Education, and Dr. Jones. My name is Jen Behet, and this is Dina Ursa. We are the co-presidents of the Central Middle School PTA this year and are here speaking in that capacity. On behalf of our current and future CMS parents, we ask you to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty-four capital budget as written, especially as it pertains to CMS. This project is of utter importance to the entire town, not just the families who send their children here. We've heard a lot about enrollment projections, but projections are not foolproof. This year, in fact, projections relied upon by the town were under actual enrollment numbers according to Greenwich, the Greenwich Time article published on September ninth of twenty twenty-two. There's new construction going on all around town that will certainly drive numbers in the upward direction. To turn a blind eye to all of this is incredibly short-sighted. And let's not forget the budget issues that the GHS entryway project now faces so far into the process as prices continue to climb for everything. This building will be here for students for decades, not just eight years. Be forward-thinking, not skittish about asking for too much. To hear the BET members say that you all should have had an earlier conversation was disheartening, to say the least. Our students should not be left waiting in the wings because conversations are happening too late in this already long and drawn-out process. If the meetings you had, week after week regarding the size and scope of the building, didn't sit right with the BET members, why didn't one of them reach out and try to sit down months ago to voice concerns? It seems that the BET has absolutely no sense of urgency in getting this project started, which is very worrisome to us. We rely on you and town government to work collaboratively. You, as the BOE, are tasked with deciding what is best for the students, teachers, and administrators in the town. We urge you to ask for what you feel is the right amount with that goal in mind without delay. Please keep the amount being requested in your budget for CMS at eighty-five point five million. If that's the amount that's needed to build the building that is the correct scope and size.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dina, did you want to go? You were signed up separately. Okay, no, that's fine then. Okay, thank you. Next up, Erica Jacoby, followed by Bob Chaney.
Hi. Good evening, Chair Stowe, members of the Board of Education, and Doctors Jones. I'm the proud parent of two Old Greenwich School students with my son entering kindergarten next year and also a former PTA president. I'm here speaking tonight, once again, supporting, representing the PTA about next year's capital line item for the OGS renovation. This project will ensure our building is dry from raw sewage flooding, properly ventilated, ADA compliant, and last but not least, allow for the security improvements to meet the recommendations set forth by Connecticut and the Department of Homeland Security. The administration, teachers, staff, and students deserve to work and learn in a safe, secure, and healthy building. This is the bare minimum that is acceptable to the parents of this town. How is it possible that as a town, the OGS Building Committee has been filled? The committee has met, but based on the BET's guidance, there's potentially no capital for this project. An amazing display of town government and politics at its finest. Clearly, someone along the way has lost the thread that a formal civil civil rights complaint has been filed against this town and that our building continues to flood with sewage. For two years, we've discussed the critical underfunding of the master's facility plan, and more than once I've heard here that we need to stop kicking the can down the road. The parents of Old Greenwich asked that the BOE do their part in stopping this cycle and continue to include our school's project as well as CMS, JC, and Riverside and next year's capital budget, despite the BET's unrealistic and absurd capital guidelines. Our community rose to the occasion to advocate for this project over the last two years, as well as in filling the building committee, and our community will rally together again over the next five months to ensure that both the first selectmen and the BET understand that this project must move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Bob Chaney, followed by Kelly Johnson. Thank you. Next, Bob Chaney, followed by Kelly Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Bob Chaney. I live in Greenwich and I'm speaking this evening as a concerned parent, having a child currently enrolled both at Julian Curtis and Central Middle School. I first want to say as a PTAC board member and CMS and JC PTA member, I am so happy to see that the BOE is working with PTAC and trying to get everything that the schools need in terms of infrastructure. Thank you, and let's continue to work towards our common goals this school year. Now to the schools. I must urge that Central Middle School, one, not be deferred, and, two, be fully funded. We have to make sure to build this school to the size and scope that is necessary. We cannot construct a smaller or substandard building. We want the school to last for 70 to 80 years. And if we decide to cut corners by cutting the budget, I fear that getting the school built the proper way will not happen. Please vote for the full $85.5 million. CMS needs every dollar of that money. We also need to make sure we stay focused on our elementary schools as well. I'll start by talking about Old Greenwich. We need to make sure OG gets the support from the BOE it deserves. I don't think I have to remind you of the lack of ADA compliance, the sewage flooding in the basement, and other horror stories. These issues are why we need to make sure OG gets its full funding. As mentioned by the Riverside PTA, their school has issues as well. While the building is well-built, it is also outdated and lacks ADA accessibility. They also have a very small cafeteria, small classrooms, as well as instructors who have no classroom space in which to teach. I can't stress enough how much Riverside needs assistance. Please approve the $150,000 line item in the budget for building, for the building study at Riverside School. Julian Curtis also needs a lot of help. While I feel that a phased approach like David could do for a good, could be a good solution to the current budget constraints, all renovations need to be completed over the next few years and we need a well-conceived plan. I am also lucky enough to be on the Building Committee for Julian Curtis and we had that one brief meeting with another one coming next week. We're just getting started. I ask that before any major budget cuts are made for JC, let us get a plan that will help JC move forward into the 21st century with not only ADA compliance, HVAC, and security, but a larger cafeteria and larger and more modern spaces for students to learn. We also cannot de-prioritize Julian Curtis either. The project needs to begin soon. I would also offer that all of these capital projects are necessary and some of them have already been deferred for years. As I said in one of my speeches and someone actually said tonight, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. It seems like people listen to me and many others here and progress is being made. I just want to make sure that we are all still moving forward in the way that is planned.
Thirty seconds.
Needing needed for each project. I ask that each and every single project listed should be voted on affirmatively. It's disappointing to see that some members seem to be wavering on full financial support. Listen, we need to stay steadfast in our support of our crumbling schools. We live in a beautiful town. Let's have our public schools reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Kelly Johnson, followed by Caitlin Hayes. I don't see Kelly online, do you, Erin? Oh, is it? Sorry, there you are. I said Kelly Johnson. Are you Kelly?
I'm Caitlin Hayes.
Oh, you're Caitlin Hayes. One second. Here. I'm going to assume. Raise your hand, Claire, if you're Kelly. I take it, no. Okay. Let's skip her then and we can always come back if she shows up. So Caitlin, you are up, followed by Joanna Jorno.
Good evening, everybody. Happy to be here tonight. Wanted to follow up on this investigation. That was come in, so it was just alerted to by Mr. Camila that Dave Pitney will be handling some of this investigation with regard to hiring practices and curriculum and undue improper influence over minor children. So I was happy to hear that. And I was always happy to get information from my paralegal about some of the potential situations that may be presenting itself over the course of this investigation with testimonies of people, maybe victims of certain wrongdoings at the hand of the schools. So to that end, I wanted to just bring everyone's attention to certain citations of the penal code. So we're going to start with, and there was a letter I sent September 1st regarding these two penal codes. One is Section 36.04 improper influence. And the other is coercion of public servant or voter, which is Section 3603. Those are brought to your attention regarding the veritas information of the imposition of ideological political meanings over children, innocent children. I wanted to bring your attention also to Penal Code 53, 21, risk of injury to a minor, which is a Class C felony, maximum jail sentence of 10 years, probation fine up to $10,000. Applies to any who willfully or unlawfully causes or threatens any child under the age of 16 to suffer injury, a risk of injury to their person, health, or morals. practical example, a school librarian or some other staff member places in a school library a graphically illustrated book depicting sexual acts, which I have seen secondhand testimony to that effect of a student here. So the injury or risk of injury to or impairing morals of children is something that needs to be on the radar as there's going to be subsequent investigations. I've already reached out to the attorney general, this is Dave Pitney. I'll be supporting every which way I can to ensure the voices of the potential victims are heard and the rectification and accountability.
Thirty seconds.
Just in time is, is actual vice here in this great town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Joanna Jorno, followed by Angie Hartoplas. Sorry, Hartoplas. Oh, Joanna's online. Thank you. Joanna, you can unmute yourself and get started. Joanna, you're now a panelist. You just have to unmute yourself. Could you help her, maybe? There she is. Go ahead, Joanna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, I, and excuse me if this question was already asked, but I really would like an answer to this. What, what exactly is the current status with Jeremy Boland? I, I know that he has a right to privacy and I know all the rigmarole of him having privacy, being an employee of the town. But as a tax-paying resident, I think I do have the right and everybody has the right to know exactly what's going on if he is still, you know, if he's, obviously, he's not, I don't know what he's doing. But is he still getting paid while being at home? What's going on with that? That's my question.
This is just public comment. This is not a back and forth. You have two more minutes.
Well, I, that, I don't, I, that's not, that's the only, that's the only thing I wanted to know about. And if that could be commented on later, I'd appreciate it. I really don't have any further comments right at this point.
Thank you. Next up, Angie Hartoplas. Sorry, Harsh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's such a great effort.
No, but it wasn't. And I know you because I know you're a kid, you play baseball, and I just said that. Feel so sorry.
It's okay. It's great. It's challenging. All right, here we go. Thank you, Dr. Jones and Board of Ed members. My name is Angie Hartoplas and tonight I'm speaking as the GPS PTAC's Green Schools Co-Chair. As many of you know, PTA Council is an umbrella organization formed by the 15 PTAs of the Greenwich Public Schools. PTAC has over 15 committees. Each one of these specialized groups has representation at each of our public schools. And each group comes up with annual goals that they were pursuing during the academic school year. In the past, Green Schools has worked on a wide variety of priorities from school gardens and air quality to recycling drives and green transportation. Tonight, I'm sharing with you this year's Green Schools goals. Each Green School rep is asked to try their best to accomplish these goals. Goal one, participate in our day, week, and/or month in April. Goal two, each school is to participate or promote a monthly green theme, such as a pollinator pathway, recycling drives, air quality, greener ways to school, and more. You may remember last year in November when all the schools participated in a battery recycling drive and we collected over 600 pounds of batteries in one month. So our third goal is our Zero Waste Initiative, which prioritizes the reinstatement of recycling, a tried-and-true cafeteria waste reduction program, a food scrap recycling pilot, and food rescue. Our objective is to gain the recognition and support of the BOE to ensure this effort is a priority and both a bottom-up and top-down effort. We aim to present the current results of the program and a second read of the zero-waste proposal at the January board meeting. Each rep will be on a green, serve on a Green Schools team made up of the principal, custodian, lunch monitor, teacher, and an outside volunteer that meets once a year. The Green Team ensures that the cafeteria sorting stations are set up correctly with appropriate bilingual signage and bins and determine the best practices and procedures. Green School reps organize and oversee biannual education efforts, including a new instructional video for classroom and cafeteria viewing and onsite monitoring with parent and community volunteers. Our GPS Zero Waste Implementation Plan. The immediate goal is to have recycling and trash up and running with signage. We are then going to be implementing a monthly rollout of the waste reduction program, including liquid collection, streamlined recycling, tray stocking, as well as shared tables and composting where possible. This fall, we are starting with the six schools that piloted the program in 2019, 2020, pre-pandemic. And then come late winter and spring, we will expand to the seven remaining schools. On this front, the BET recently approved the appropriation of over $5,000 in state funds from the mini liquor bottle, bottle, bottle revenues for the Zero Waste Schools Initiative, where you use these funds to purchase the remaining bins, sorting stations, and also have funds to run the organics hauling pilot at New Leb. The program will not cost the district money this year. And it is important to us that we remember that recycling is mandated by state and local law. There is also great value that is not reflected. Oh, I didn't get my 30 seconds.
Sorry, I was so impressed with what you were saying.
Oh, shoot. Can I just say my last three sentences?
Three sentences. Okay.
Okay, just so I know, there's also great value that is not reflected in dollar signs and that is the educational benefits of this program to our students and the environmental benefits of reducing waste. We are a hard-working, passionate group of volunteers, much like yourselves, and we appreciate letting you share our goals with you tonight.
Thank you. I get that because I messed up your name. So, um, thank you so much. Katie Yu is back online and so we can go back to her as that was our last speaker and then we'll go to Lil.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Katie.
Okay, hi there. Good morning. I mean, good evening. I apologize. Busy day. Really quick, I wanted to just make a couple of comments on the ALP report that's being discussed this evening. Okay, so while many of the changes to the program are appreciated and beneficial, such as going back to the ALP Science pullout, it's my opinion that the ALP report also lacks some details that families would have liked to have seen. For instance, I would have liked to have seen more disclosure on the implications of eliminating additional placement tests such as the NWEA for students entering sixth grade. I personally felt it was a little bit misleading that the report mentions the NWE exam on page one, but then doesn't mention that this was eliminated for incoming sixth graders. Has the board considered the drawbacks of eliminating this test? This is the only test that can capture above-level norm reference progress monitoring. As we consider the trajectory of our advanced learners, the elimination of this type of testing hampers the identification of these students as well as the assessment of their preparedness for high school. Just a couple of things to think about. How are we going to know how prepared students are for the rigors of the GHS Science Program, which many families have said represent a significant jump in rigor from the middle school? How does the elimination of NWEA testing identify a student who might make a huge jump in a subject once they're in middle school? As the report highlights, the number of middle school students in ALP Science classes has grown to represent over half of Greenwich's middle school students. However, this number is incongruous with the placement of students in advanced courses at the high school. Our current middle school teachers are tasked with a number of items on a daily basis. Is it really fair to also leave this assessment to the observations of a teacher who in some cases may be teaching a class with as many as 30-plus kids? How are we able to really understand how our middle school students are doing in advanced math and science classes without continued above-level progress monitoring? For example, an above-average test score might lead a teacher to recommend that a seventh grader enroll in the summer geometry course with a goal of taking Algebra II in eighth grade. I also just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the students who are triple jumpers. Currently, there is a few middle school students who attend a morning.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. I'm just going to kind of skip through this and just kind of mention that some of these really high-achieving students and high school students are currently relegated to a freely open, available, open-source math program that they have to research and petition for all on their own. While there really are a number of broad range of courses at the high school, I really think that we need to consider opening our program up to also include linear algebra and differential equations. I've gone into some details in the letter that I sent to the board and I really would ask the board to take a look at some of these considerations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, that's the end of the public comment, but we're going to come back to Lil to finish us off.
Thank you very much for the courtesy. I was at Greenwich High School and I had trouble getting out. And I have two forms of technology because I left my charge at Board of Education. So yeah, one of those days and weeks, but I am prepared. A little bit of a different speech tonight than usual, different theme. Well, I'm just scrolling back up. It is about truth. And since I was at the high school, I have to be honest, I'd rather be at the football game right now, watching that. But this is the, this is the true reality here. So the theme of my speech tonight is, is truth. Tonight, I wish to talk about truth and what it is. To the teachers of Greenwich, truth is evidence-based, not some made-up stance to appease one person, party, or personal gain. To the teachers of Greenwich, it's what we face, teach, model on a day-to-day basis. Not someone's ideas that will appease constituents. We love discourse. We love collaboration. To teachers of Greenwich, it's a process in which I teach our students to be successful in the 21st century world by teaching them problem-solving, critical thinking, advocating for self and others that will allow them to embrace the challenges that lie ahead for their generations and the generations to come. Over the past two weeks, I had the opportunity to attend three of the four RTM meetings, the committee meetings. The RTM Contract and Labor Committee, the RTM Education Committee meeting, and the RTM Finance Committee meeting. As you all know, the RTM Representative Town Meeting, RTM Committees meeting exists to inform their RTM membership about upcoming town business. The committee members in return to the districts inform the fellow representatives before official vote takes place at their regular scheduled RTM meeting, which happens to be this Monday, October 24th, which is my dad's birthday. Today's my second anniversary. Tomorrow's my brother's. All right, so since we're on that theme, I could go on because I'm Italian family. I have a lot of relatives all on the same day. All right, so. And they're all Anthony. Okay, all right. So these are important town meetings provided by the chairs. So I was reflecting on things that I heard. But what I heard and observed presented at the first RTM contract negotiation meetings were selected parts of information. And not all were selected, but half of the things that, that I had problems and issues with and had to, had to speak the truth at the meetings were truly, what I felt were truly disingenuous and duplicit in nature. Those are strong words and I stand by them. I reflected on that meeting and I came to the conclusion that I must find courage and stand and deliver to the community. And that's what I'm doing tonight. Not to be fearful to speak the truth as some people do here, but for the voice of truth to tell my story. So here is my story. People who are elected, appointed, or volunteered, including myself and people in this room and in the community, have an obligation to the best of their knowledge to provide accurate information to allow members to make the best informed decisions for our students, our children, our staff, and our community. So here's my story that I had the opportunity to share with the Education Committee to correct all the information that was presented. Just a few bullets here. I know it was published in The Niche and came out in Contract Negotiations. I know it was published in the niche and came out uh in uh contract negotiations uh and uh the patch in which will uh they responded to give us a retraction. The teachers make 158. Now that must be the new math because our top salary on the six years, 121. The true average, which is now posted in the niche is 87.5. Teachers didn't work for six months during COVID. Again, not true. The whole state closed down on March 12th. That information included the months of July and August. I know a lot of people here do not know that schools close in the summer. So if you don't know that in the six months they're closed. All right. The town pays our pension. Not true. Teachers pay 100% of their pension. It's taken out every week to the, to the TRB. There is a small portion though that is given to retired teachers. And I don't, I'm not sure what that is. It could be 250. It might be 350 this year, but all the teachers in this town, a lot of people don't know that. We pay our own pension. Also was presented, all teachers get longevity. You probably know the answer to that already. Not true. That was negotiated out in 1996. So anyone hired after 1996 does not get longevity. Not too many of us left. I happen to be one of them as disclosure. Okay. He's about 10, I think, out of our 875 teachers. I lost track because of long-term subs, but uh there's about 10. There is no teacher shortage. Okay. We're down 250,000 teachers uh throughout the district. We have a shortage uh throughout the country and the state of Connecticut. Again, not true. That question was also put to Mr. Bud who did verify that with me because we do have some openings still here in Greenwich. So I have to ask all you courageous men and women of the town of Greenwich. Where are you? For the past two years, I hate, heard you say in town meetings, we love our teachers. We work, they work hard. We're the only district open. We had students all year. Now, what I'm hearing at these meetings, we're paid too much. You don't work hard enough. Did I miss something? What happened over these last couple of months? Our Greenwich teachers showed up. They did their job. They cared and instructed students. You know that and I know that. A lot of people out there know that. I'm asking the parent community, it's time for you to show up at the RTM meeting this Monday and you speak your truth. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Lil. Uh, trying some monthly reports. Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna start out with the midterm piece. I am not really that well informed. Now, there may be somebody like, I don't know, Ann, if you've been in that conversation yet. Because we generally talk about that at student government meeting. This where.
Yeah. So I think, and they can, Dan, you could say yay or nay, but I think they liked what happened last year. Right? And so they're advocating for that again, which was pretty cool. Ralph and you kind of strategize on that last year, right? And it was to the benefit, five to 10%, right? Midterm based on final, based on what was the higher of, right?
I will follow up with Mr. Mayo. Absolutely. Um, as you know, we're hard at work on the operating budget. We did just get um some guidelines. So you know, over the next two weeks, I, I'm going to thank the team in advance um who are working incredibly hard to get ready to present an operating budget. Um foundations, our materials have arrived for pre K, so we're excited that we're going to be now pre K through grade three for foundations, which we really feel like um it's just going to be such a, an addition for our pre K earliest learners. Um, just an update on the buses. We do feel like buses are running much more effective. Um, yesterday they were all on time. We, for the most part, we've been having trouble with, it's generally about two or three buses. On any bus contract, you always have something almost every day. Um, somewhere there's where a bus is late because you know, the roads stopped or something's happened or a tree has fallen. Our start to the year this year, as you know, was very, very challenging, but since um we've had more involvement with first student, it's definitely improved uh weekly meetings with them. So hopefully we're on the right track. Um, I did have a question this week about uh private schools and did we consolidate routes? Uh, we've been consolidating routes for the last three years. Uh, and, and again, because of budget constraints to make sure we're running as efficiently as possible. That includes public schools and yes, it includes private schools. And uh, we were running some buses even at the beginning of this year that were private buses for the private schools that would only have two or three children on them. And so we, we monitor all the bus counts for again, public and private, and then we make those adjustments as the year goes on. Also just, uh, you know, I want to say um, I'm grateful to our three middle school principals who really came together on an issue that was important to the community. And that was the Washington DC trip in eighth grade. So we did not take that trip during COVID. The decision early on at this year was that we probably were not going to be taking it this year. And part of that had to do with the cost. They simply, it was getting just to the point where they could no longer afford it. The scholarships were different at each middle school. So they came together and also with their PTAs had, I, you know, some really valuable conversation. All three middle schools are going to do the same trip. They really worked to get the costs down. Um, and they're going to work as a team to make sure that kids who need it and families that need it have those scholarships available equally across all three schools. So I'm just, I'm really proud of that effort. And that's how we want to be really in everything. When we talk about equity, that, that's really the essence of what we're talking about. Um, I also want to congratulate um ISD. Um, they had their IB authorization and Christina was able to join me for that. Um, that was a real, a real delight. And I, I think the uh authorization evaluators were very, very impressed with ISD and everything that's going on in that building. So congratulations to that entire staff. And I think that's it for me tonight. Oh, also I know that Trish, it was mentioned your UN day. I wasn't there today, but I heard it was absolutely fabulous. So congratulations on that as well.
Yeah, go ahead. It's Kloski.
So Tony, one of our speakers tonight regarding PTAs had mentioned all the environmental efforts that were being done with respect to schools. And I just wanted to understand how that played out in conversations that we've had before where we have, schools have been identified and we've wanted to do the different types of recycling and, and getting rid of the liquids and, and other um composting where we have, where you yourself has have one expressed concerns that we can't do composting at certain schools because of the animals. Two, there are additional requirements with respect to our um staffing situations. And I want to understand how that's going forward and how that conflicts with what we've, you've said before about those environmental processes going forward in the schools.
So when we discussed this, um, before the school year started, we said we were going to reestablish those schools that had the larger recycling already in place pre COVID. So that very next day I followed up with the schools. They've all put that back in this year. It's back in place. Um, as far as the buildings, I know, as far as the recycling bins that are coming, it'll be up to each building to see. It may be consistent use. It may be inconsistent. It'll depend on who they have in the buildings that can actually do the work. And every building has a different volunteer status. So you know, they work on that composting will not be at all buildings for sure. Uh, some buildings have tried it and they felt like it made the playgrounds unsafe for children. Just simply depends on where they're located. But you don't want to have a compost bin and then find out the foxes are coming and you know, you've got a hawk stuck in the compost bin. And so they've tried it and they gave 110%, but some of it just didn't work. So it's really case by case, but we're trying to work with the green schools as much as we can. We see the value in it as well.
And the last question I had is that one aspect of that program, I think that's being run at New Lebanon is not, the comment was it's not going to cost us money this year. So the next tagline would be so it will, may have a cost next year. And I think I'd like to know what that is.
So that is not being driven by the school district. That's the green schools. And that is a concern that, that we have expressed is that if we were going to do that at 15 schools, what would the cost be? And I actually, I don't know the answer to that. Um, and maybe New Lab will be a good test case for it and to be able to figure out what the cost will be. I think Joe, maybe he knows more than I do.
No, I never do. But in this case, I have worked uh with Julie and Angie. And she didn't, uh, she was, uh, presented some of the stuff, but didn't emphasize some of the high points. I don't think. I, I met with them and uh, and told them, I guess the request last time they spoke to us was they wanted some of the uh, the really tight capital or really tight money we get from the, uh, from the town. And my advice to them was to try to find money somewhere else. And what the heck did they do? They went out and got money someplace else. They got a state grant for over $5,000 to be able to buy those uh, those garbage cans and be able to make those signs and be able to start this process of uh, of, of reducing the liquid waste, reducing the cost of bringing the uh, the waste to the dump. They've had tremendous success so far. In New Lebanon school, uh, geez, Angie, I wish I can get you up here to talk about the uh, uh, the different points, but they, there was such, such great improvements just in a short period of time. Uh, they brought me along. I offered my services. Instead of you need uh some influence at all, uh, I could use whatever influence a board of ed member might have. And they brought me along a couple of times to a couple of their meetings. And uh, uh, man, their stuff is great and it's working. It seems to be consistent. Uh, we have three more schools, I guess we're opening up with soon. Uh, we're going to uh Central Middle School, Eastern and OGS. And uh, and we'll be starting and all the, the uh, the principals or the administrators of those schools seem so enthusiastically in support of this uh, of this uh implementation that I think within itself, just because it is doing the right thing. And uh, and if we're all kind of doing the right thing, we work together on it. Uh, the costs, of course, we have to keep aware of that, but I know when I told these guys, I said, listen, we can't really be uh, be, be going to, into this budget because we got books to buy and things like that. What'd they do? They found the money themselves. They're resourceful. Uh, it's successful. Uh, they will be able to show some savings. Dump fees, I believe, will be saving on as well. So I think it actually might be sustainable and uh, and put them to task. I believe if there's more money needed in the future, I think they'll work in that and get that. I was very, very impressed working with them. Thank you very much.
Well, um, so going Laura Costin, updates? Sorry, Central Middle School.
Oh, sorry. Is it working now? Okay. So for the CMS Building Committee, we have hired an owner's rep. Uh, and we are soon going to be interviewing architects. And uh, I know you're all going to be thrilled to hear that we, as a board of education, are going to need an additional a special meeting in November so we can approve the hiring of an architect. Just letting you know now. I'm sorry about that, but we need to keep this process rolling so that um, we can meet all the deadlines associated with keeping this project on track. Uh, so yes, we will need a special meeting to approve the hiring of an architect for Central in November.
Good to know. Thank you. Anybody else that way? Ms. Downey?
I think I'm going to wait on the entryway until we talk about it during the budget, maybe.
That's fine. Yeah. Joe, did you want to talk about um, any RTM updates or I think we're covered. I mean, we're basically Monday night. There are two things everyone should know on the edge, on the agenda from the board of that perspective. One is the GEA contract. And the second is our safety and security interim. So.
So you want us to talk specifically about that?
I don't think so. I just said, no, we, you know, everyone should know that Joe was chair of the negotiations committee. And then Christine and I, since we're on the committee, spent some time at these meetings over the past few days, right? The votes, I would say.
Well, yeah, I guess.
Go ahead.
If we want to talk about that, I guess what it's come down to is uh, we've settled the contract with the GEA. And now we have the RTM has to approve uh that contract. And if the RTM uh does not approve that contract, then the contract will be decided not by the Greenwich Board of Education, but will be decided by arbitrators uh outside of the town of Greenwich who will hear or will submit our uh, our last and final offers. And then that arbitrator who's not from Greenwich, outside of Greenwich, will make a decision uh based on their evaluation of the uh, the marketplace inflation, other issues. So they will vote to, if they, the RTM votes to reject the contract, which we, as a board of education approved, then it will go to an outside entity to decide uh the contract with the teachers. It doesn't stop the uh, it, it doesn't stop a teacher uh, uh, we'll call it adjustment due to inflation raise by voting against the contract. It just has somebody, somebody else other than us uh decide what that raise is going to be.
Correct. And we'll know that Monday, which obviously um will influence our operating budget, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. Okay. Um, yes, Michael Joseph.
So the old Greenwich Building Committee also started meeting. We've had two meetings. The old grid, they, they elected, uh, they picked their officers, James Waters is going to be the chair of that committee. And we established a pretty much a weekly meeting cadence. So we'll be meeting weekly and try to get the ball rolling with old Greenwich. So going there. I did, um, I did have a, a quick question on back of the superintendent's report. The, um, that's okay. The um, we had a, um, there's a comment, the, um, it's pie worth, is it okay, uh, Dr. Jones to remind the community what you can and can't say regarding the uh principle, the assistant principle at Costco, given the question we had during the public comment?
Yeah, it's a personnel, it's a personnel matter. And so I'm not at liberty to speak about that in public. And I'm also not the one that's managing the investigation that's done by HR. Okay, there's clearly something wrong with this water bottle, but um, the only other thing I was going to say as a general update, which is that of course there is a town investigation going on. There's a CHR investigation going on. There is an attorney general investigation going on. I think I'm missing one actually. Um, and so at State Board of Ed, thank you very much. So there are four independent investigations ongoing. That is all managed through Town Legal. And I, I think it's well, fair to say that at this time, we probably don't need another investigation by us, especially because there is, it's costly. Um, and so you know, even the town has struggled, I think, to make sure that they have the appropriate funds. They are of course doing so. But um, you know, I think that we will, we will be updated when we're updated, but we really can't know anything in, at this time. Um, the only other thing I was going to add on a fun note is the central, uh, the middle school DC trips. The only downside to that is that there's more chocolate in my house. Okay. Is, are there any other? Oh, yes, Cody.
I have all my uh Greenwich Alliance for Education updates. Turkey Trot is Saturday, November 26th. Registration is open and the school competition is on. Uh, the school with the most participants to, and most participants enrolled will win $500 register before the prices increase on November 1st. Uh, second one, the annual Greenwich Alliance Book Drive for the Boys and Girls Club was a huge success with well over 2,000 books collected at Parkway Whitby. And uh, by the GHS Roots and Shoots Club in the local libraries. And the Boys and Girls Club members took come bags of books to build up their home libraries. The third update, just, I know this one attracts attention. Uh, so don't shoot the messenger. That's, I'm just delivering the messages the most. Uh, Dr. Mark Brackett, who's the founder and director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence and developer of Ruler, will be presenting on Tuesday, October 25th at 7:00 PM at Eastern Middle School. The Alliance is sponsoring this event with P-Tech and EMS and Eastern's PTA. Uh, his presentation is titled Emotional Intelligence: Key to Raising Healthy, Happy and Successful Children. I am not endorsing any of that, not against it either. Just don't send me emails about that. Um, great. Thanks.
Okay, that's a great way to end. Any? On that note, um, okay, we're going to move in a strange way to action items, then discussion, then back to action. And I decided that we should have capital at the top of this meeting because I think we all need to have sort of, you know, be thinking clearly. Um, so I send a spreadsheet. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Last update. Greenwich High School is winning 20 to 10 in tonight's football game. 20 to 10.
Well done. That's a good update. Okay, so. Um, so I sent it around and I can, I don't know if we can share this, but it doesn't really matter. I just wanted to do this so all of us could.
Probably a skip posted.
Okay, Michael Antonaccio, then you have it, right? Since your copy probably on my board of ed email. So if you could.
You want me to put it up on the screen?
Sure. No one knocked me for my 35 second Excel skills. I, you know, it was a long time ago when I was an analyst. So. But I wanted to just, so we could all, um, we, I guess I should preface it with the fact that obviously this is moving more quickly than this board has been used to in the past. I do know that this is something that, you know, a decade ago or so, the board of ed did do this early, but this is new to us. did do this early, but this is new to us. So, um, as a result, I know the Budget Committee has met a couple of times. There's been a few different iterations and I just think in the interest of transparency, that this was the best way for all of us to be on the same page. Um, I should also note though, for, um, finding this silver lining, I do think it's great to actually be doing capital separately from operating because it really forces us to focus early on these rather large numbers. So I am going to put forth a motion, which I, is just to get it on the table. Um, and then we could take it from there. And that is to approve the proposed fiscal year 24 capital budget of 134,652,311. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Downey. Now let me explain that. And if it was up there? Not yet. Okay. Oh, there we go. Okay. So on September 15th was the original proposal that came to the board. The Budget Committee met. And then, um, coming out of their budget meeting, they made some reductions, but Central Middle School, they also increased to reflect, um, and I'll have Christine and I talk about that, some of the actuals. Um, then that is what's presented in our board packet that you have today of 137,752,311. My change is $3.1 million, which the administration very diligently went back, looked at open capital and other things to see where else we might be able to make some cuts. And those are enumerated here. There was 25,000 coming out of the trees at Cardinal Field. Um, 196,000 on masonry, 224,000 at specific places and flooring, 2 million on furnishings and 655,000 at a few different buildings, across different buildings for HVAC. Those together brought us down another 3.1 million to the number I just put on the table. I am now going to make another motion to, um, delete 12 million from Western Middle School. Can I get a second and I'll explain it then? Okay, Ms. Kowalski, thank you. Um, this by no means is a reflection of me not wanting Western Middle School soil to be done as quickly as possible. But the reality is we don't know what the exact amount is, nor do we have approval from the state yet. And I know this feels like we say this every year because we do. But we, I just didn't think it was prudent for us to hold up any capital at this time when we know that there is commitment from this board and the BET to fund this as soon as we have something. So that's why I'm reducing it. Ms. Hirsch.
Um, I know we have a Western Middle School fields update that's coming after this, but it might be interesting to just if there's, if we have some kind of information going forward on, uh, before we vote on that to, to remove it. Um, if we have any kind of timeline, because I mean, it's, it's, I mean, this is ever, every, you know, taking forever.
We are still waiting on the state. The only thing I can say is that we have pulled in, um, AECom to actually work with Langen, uh, to get a stronger team, not a team as in the submission. Langen still carries all of that at the state. But, um, just getting all of the, basically the management side in place so that we're ready to go. We're still wanting to be, we're, we're hoping to still be going this summer, but that's, it's going to take.
So is there something specific we're waiting for the, for the state now at this point?
I think for the, the final approval, they have the, uh, they have the plan, but we got, you have to get them to sign off on it.
Uh, and we have, we have no indication of where that is because I know for the past couple of months, we kept saying it's about to happen. It's about to happen.
Well, I think in their term, that, that's, that's aggressive. But, uh, you know, it's, it is frustrating for everybody. What I can say is it's been in there. And again, we're waiting on the approval.
Uh, sure. So, um, once the plan is approved, what is the next step?
Then we have to have the public hearing, which is just required, which we did. If you remember when we had one for the high school, I think it was actually in here. Um, doesn't take a long time, but you have to post, you know, appropriately, you have to have the public hearing. And in the meantime there, you know, we're getting ready to go out to bid. Uh, that's the piece AECom actually did for the high school. It's one of the reasons we're also bringing them in. Uh, they managed the bid process for who is going to do the work, uh, which also included, uh, a very intricate, uh, scoring sheet to make sure that it's, it's a big project. So you want to make sure all that's done correctly. Um, so it's, it's getting all of that in motion. So we're ready to go.
Just to go over it, so it's nice and simple and clear. If tomorrow we get a nice phone call from the, uh, folks that tell us we could do this, right? And, uh, you've taken or voted to take this out of the budget and we could begin, what would we do? If we did not, if they gave us permission to go right ahead and we've taken it out of our budget?
Well, and we actually could get started. We're working now anyway. We had a small budget to start with, but as you remember last year, uh, we took it out as a board because they had said to go for an interim. Uh, I believe it was the first selectmen's office that put it back in. So we actually have a portion of the 2 million that we initially had, plus the 8 million. So we actually have money right now to keep going.
So we have money to actually, nothing will delay us because we have money to use. And if, as we start using that money and burning through that money, we then could go grasp the rest of the money we need and secure that money because everyone is on board for this project. So therefore putting it out of the budget is not going to affect the implementation of this plan if we get approval, uh, quickly.
That is correct. And I really want to emphasize that because, um, after the guidelines came out from the BET, immediately the next day I heard from Gordon Weinstein, principal, he was already hearing from his parents because in the guidelines, it focuses on like three different projects and does not mention Western. And so I reassured him that, uh, we've been talking about this for a couple of years and that when we are ready, we were told we can go for the interim and there is support, um, to get this done for the kids.
So with that knowledge, I would feel comfortable, uh, removing that according to the second motion of the evening, uh, from the budget.
But you had a question, right?
I mean, I was just gonna say that it's a very logical thing to do, given that it's already funded and it, it will have support when it comes up. But it's a good reminder for all the parents, um, uh, who question why we don't have capital for other projects, that this crazy project is going to cost more than $20 million to remediate something that was never a real issue to begin with. So it's, you can thank the bureaucrats in Hartford and these super crazy environmentalists just can't resist. And so it's, it's, uh, a crime against all the kids in Greenwich.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Yes, Karen.
No, I just want to say, I, I, and I think it's fair to say, I mean, we've had a lot of conversations, I think each of us separately with not only each other, but with other town departments, uh, and, and governing bodies about Western Middle School to gain the confidence that we have in order to handle it this way. Because it is a firm commitment on not only the part of the Board of Ed, but the, in the entire town and other governing bodies to get this done. So it is a way for us to maneuver through all of the little intricacies we have with capital, but putting that side, it's a special project that we're all committed to get done. We just need to know what the number is.
Okay. So I'm going to call the vote on this particular motion, all in favor of deleting 12 million associated with Western Middle School. Okay, that passes eight zero. It's not dynamic there, but it's dynamic here. That's fine. Um, so that brings us down, just so you all know, to obviously 122653311. Ms. Downey?
I have a motion.
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to, um, delete the $275,000 for the Greenwich High School entryway. I'll give explanation if someone says.
I am happy to second that.
Um, just since I didn't do it as a committee update, um, committee is still working on trying to find a way to value engineer the project. You know, this, this was kind of my idea a couple of budget meetings ago to put some money in, um, to save hope up as a placeholder, but kind of similar to, not exactly the same as the Western Fields, but I think it's going, it, it will come back to us as a board to make a decision if we want to ask for more money. Um, and we'll have a very specific number at that point in time. But, but the committee is still working to try to reduce the size and keep the project within the budget. So given that, it seemed prudent to me to not put money in there just for the sake of putting money in there because we can make a decision and always ask for it later.
Ms. Hirsch?
So just to be clear, since I know this is, you know, been, been on a priority for us for quite some time, much like Western, although, uh, a little different. Um, if we do, uh, reduce this out and we get a firm number, do you have, have you spoken to other town bodies, much like we have regards to Western?
We have the money already appropriated for, if we keep the money within the budget, the money has already been appropriated. So if we stay within the budgeted number, it's a non-event.
All right. Seeing no other questions? Okay. All in favor of deleting that amount, 275,000? Okay, that passes eight zero. That brings us to 122378311.
Kathleen?
Yes, Ms. Costin?
There is a request from viewers of this meeting on the BET to make the columns bigger if we can.
So Michael is controlling that. And I should tell him, Michael, if you just put the numbers in column A and just put like minus 12 million.
It should have.
It's on column K.
Itself. I, I did it, um, for two of them. If, I believe I did it correctly.
But you didn't put the.
You didn't put it in the motions column. You have to put it in K.
Yeah, they can't see the totals on the screen. That's all.
We're at 122378311. I suppose I should have logged on to Zoom on this computer, but I was using my work computer versus my school work.
Yeah, to be, to be fair, on the document we got, it's very hard to read too, without having to make it big anyway. So.
All right. Are you at 122378211 and M36? I can't say it. What you say is 122378311? Yes, and M36? That's what you should have. Okay. Um, anything else? No?
Oh, so we're, now we're going to talk about the rest of this?
Well, if you'd like to make any reductions, this would be where you would do it. You'd have to make a motion to make on a specific line item. Can I ask a question? Then get a second and then we'd vote on it, right?
Can I ask a question about?
Sure.
Uh, some of the changes that we've seen from, uh, the last iteration of this to now, other than, other than ones we just discussed. Um, I just wanted to, you know, just to ask, uh, I see that the kitchen renovation was pushed back a year. So that's different. You know, we, we've taken that out from this, uh, from the first time we looked at this. Um, the gymnasium resident renovations and upgrades to playground equipment, um, as well. So I don't know if there's any, you know, I, please don't make me cry at a board of education meeting again. But I'm wondering, um, I, I'm, I'm wondering, uh, where this go and if, if that's okay to, to move that back.
Should we have Blaze come join us and talk about?
Yes, Blaze, would you mind coming up and actually addressing, I, that's true. We sort of skipped over the 3.1 million of reductions that I just sort of threw out there.
Well, you discussed those, but these are ones that were changes from when we saw this and discussed it like a week or so ago.
After the, sorry, yep.
Hey, everybody.
Hello Blaze, good evening.
Good to see you. Um, yeah, so the, the Budget Committee had met, um, and had made a few changes as well after extensive conversation. Um, we have been as a team to Dr. Jones, Dan, myself and Kim, have been aggressively trying to look through every dollar that we possibly have. Um, some of these decisions too, this was even before guidelines came out on Monday, uh, where we, we went through even more. Um, the changes on Friday, the GHS Kitchen, after extensive conversation, that was pushed to fiscal year 25. Um, and the total cost of that project after, uh, Dan has engaged an engineer. Um, that was a $400,000 project. Um, so it went from the original 250 to 400,000, but that was pushed out by one year. Um, the playground replacement this year, the fiscal year 24 request was for, uh, the second half of ISD. We went through the project. We looked at the existing funds. We spoke, um, about what exactly we need to get done over there. And we can use the existing funds that we have in our current playground, um, replacement program fiscal year 23 allocation that's existing to complete that ISD project. So no request will be needed for that second half or fiscal year 24. So we're not cutting that piece. We're able to accomplish that second half with existing funds. Um, and then the renovate gymnasiums, we have open capital, uh, for that program right now. So a decision was made, um, that we were all comfortable with to push out additional funds so we can use up the existing open capital. Those were the three changes in the two versions.
So we've, we've, uh, we found a way to do this without, um, increasing our capital budget.
That is correct. Yeah. And without sacrificing, especially the playground one was a big one, um, for the second half of the ISD playground.
Thank you and the, uh, Budget Committee for really doing the deep dive to, to save some of the, figure out how to get some of this stuff done. Thanks.
Go ahead, Ms. Kowalski.
Oh, did you have a comment or? Like I was gonna ask Blaze one question. Okay, I was too.
Um, Blaze, I just think, um, just because the 85% for Central, maybe you could just talk about how that revised number, which you and I have talked about, how that number came to pass, just for those in the public who have not heard how it was determined.
Yeah, that's a good one. So we spoke at our, um, Budget Committee meeting on, on, um, Friday about the approach that we agreed upon. Um, it was to take the, to get, get a updated square footage number. The way we did that was to take, um, the architects that the building committee is using. Um, they, we were asked to provide a square foot recommendation. Um, we took that square foot recommendation, took an average of that. Um, there was a six that we took out there. Um, it's a hundred, you know, so that's a square foot price. This is inclusive of the soft costs as well. They were asked to provide, you know, soft costs. Um, that gives a square footage number, uh, 115,311 square feet, which is what are in the ed specs. And then an assumption of, um, 5 million for FFNE and the average of that gives the 85.4 million.
And just for, maybe you can explain for people who aren't as familiar with the process, what the soft costs are?
Yeah. So the soft costs are all the engineering, architectural services, any type of lawyer fees, um, permits, approvals, um, owner's rep, um, and oversight. And if I'm missing anything, Dan, in that.
Contingency.
Contingency as well. Um, and the soft costs are important. I think the assumption that was, uh, historically has been used is around 10%. But with what we've seen in the market, um, the town has been using a number of 20% instead. So.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, the original number for Central did not include the soft costs or the FFNE. Is that correct?
The original number was a hard cost construction square foot number.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Kowalski.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to remove the, which I think has been deemed athletics for 450,000, which refers to the Cardinal Track, uh, stadium repair.
I'm happy to second that. Could we maybe get a little, little bit of information on? That was their report or anything? Could you? Blaze, can you give us a little insight on this?
Yeah, we had a, a report that was done by Weston and Sampson, um, their respected engineering firm. Um, I think we circulated that report to the board, but the, the highlight is there is that the track needs to be, uh, resurfaced. This price doesn't include expanding lanes or anything, but if you go through, um, you know, the detail on those pages, it's, it basically comes down to the fact that it's reached the end of its useful life and it needs to be, you know, resurfaced. There were no major critical deficiencies that were specifically identified. The report identifies a number of, um, maintenance pieces crumbling, um, you know, track material. Dan, I'm not sure if you want to add anything on, that I'm specifically missing, but.
Okay, yes, Mr. Kelly?
Will it make our runners run more slowly if we do not change the track?
I cannot answer that question.
Dan, you have some track expertise. Do you have any insight there? Thank you.
Okay. Any, Cody?
Yeah, we talked about this one in the Budget Committee meetings. I, I think it should be removed. It's a, um, it was something that the administration wanted to do last year as well. And this year was fine. There was a, like a, some sort of hole that had to be filled in that cost about $20,000 to do so. And I think if a hole emerged again. if a hole emerged again, you could fill it. And the, just when you compare the cost of four hundred and fifty grand at kind of a reasonable interest rate, you're probably, uh, it's like in a bad situation where you have a hole, it's still nets out about even, and that's if that happens. So I think when you think about the, you know, our big priorities, uh, it's one of those years where you try to push things if you can. This one struck me as something that could be pushed because it's kind of a, you know, precautionary move, but it doesn't seem, um, it's not like a, it doesn't strike me as, uh, any kind of irresponsible risk-taking. Like, uh, Blaze said, the report didn't identify anything that needed to be addressed. It's just at some point we should resurface this, so I, I would push it a year.
Yep, Ms. Hersh? That was what I was gonna ask, and we were talking about removing it. Are we gonna look to push it back another year or so? I just know, having read the report myself, I pretty much agree with Cody and a lot, you know, it's in its current state, it seems fine. Uh, my husband's been running on that track, exactly that track, I guess, since he was in high school and still runs on it. And he's be going just as fast.
Really? He's going just as fast? Really?
I'm going to say yes. He's listening, so yes, yes, he is speedy.
Um, okay, I think we've, I think we can call that question. All right, all in favor of deleting the track and moving it to the next year perhaps? Please. We're voting to remove it in this year. No, not necessarily. The motion is to remove it from this.
I guess that's right, although we are sending the entire. Also, can I amend that then, or do we, the motion to move it a year to, to this year and move?
Why don't we just deal with this year? And so why don't we just delete it in its entirety? And if we need to?
No, but I think we do, to be, to be prudent, we should be having, if we think it's something we need to do, maybe not next year, two years, five years, it should be in our fifteen-year capital plan. Maybe. Delete it in its entirety for fifteen years. No.
Maybe should we, we should ask Blaze how we should address this?
That's a good idea, Joe.
Yeah, if you're gonna do it within fifteen years, we, at the end of the day, we, we do have to send over a fifteen-year plan. Um, the focus obviously is fiscal year twenty-four, but, but the document that we will have to provide to the town is the fifteen-year plan, so it's, it's gonna need to be somewhere. Um, if it's gonna stay on.
So I think that's a point of order, because I asked this question last time, and, and I think we're, we have a different answer now. Ultimately today, are we approving the capital budget for this year, or are we approving a fifteen-year schedule that includes the capital budget for this year?
Go ahead, Blaze. So it's, it's confusing because this is a newer process. So that's, that's the issue. They're asking for a five-year plan, but the reality is we're sending one number right now. So, and, and I should have said this at the beginning, like, these, it's not like this is being done in a vacuum and we're done, right? So we're going to continue to have conversations with the first selectman's office, who then sends it to the BET, because remember this, the capital is sort of dealt differently than operating. So let's focus on now, and then I think the staff, I'm gonna ask you, Blaze, to maybe put it where you deem appropriate, and then the Budget Committee can sort of deal with that over the next.
Well, I think we had to send this on Monday, right?
Correct.
We have to send fiscal year twenty-four.
We do have to send a fifteen-year plan. Um, you're appropriating, so the, the focus is fiscal year twenty-four. That, that is the focus, and the town only appropriates one year at a time. To your point, we, we can do something, the out years are conversation years for planning. I mean, the town does budget debt service off of the fifteen-year model. Um, and we do, when we go as staff, and many of you, you come to, and we go through the BET, we do end up having to talk about that out year number that does also get sent over as well. I think especially considering the size of this year's request, there's also gonna be a lot of focus on the out year requests. It is something, you know, in the out years, you, you can move them around. I mean, it's not like, we're not appropriating those funds, so there's a lot of flexibility in those out years.
And I think it's also to the point that if we take it out for fifteen years, it sends a signal that we're not gonna do it for fifteen years, which is as opposed to the point, I'm not sure we're convinced that will last another fifteen years, which is why it needs to just be in there so that it's not like this out of the blue project at some point. So we just, if it's in there, whether it's in year two, year six, or year eleven, it's in there, correct, Blaze?
Yeah, it's, you wanna have it somewhere, we're not, we're not committed to a year, so things can move around. You know, obviously the focus is on fiscal year twenty-four, because that's the year you're appropriating. Um, and then the BET did ask for kind of a five-year look, and in the guidelines, there's a, a five-year number that the town is shooting for. At, at the end of the day, we have to move something, we have to send a fifteen-year plan over. Things get moved around, as, uh, Ms. Stowe said. It's really the start of the process. Capital is quite different, um, than operating, just because of the role that, you know, the two different budgets play in town. Uh, this is a document that then goes through a first selectmen review and has public comment for the first selectmen. It then has public comment through the BET Budget Committee. It then has public comment through the full BET, which are all boards that can kind of do, you know, anything with capital versus operating where they're, they're extremely limited. Um, and then the RTM will have all their public meetings, and it won't be voted on until May. Um, and throughout all of that, the Board of Ed is in, which is in a little bit of a different position than the rest of the town, because this entire process and this fifteen-year plan is all kind of done throughout, through a public meeting, rather than just kind of moving things around and ending up with a number, but your fiscal year twenty-four is your, your most important number. We can, we can put things in the out years. I would be cautious on, on just relying, maybe if there's strong opinions on, on a particular project, I'd be cautious on just relying on staff input to put that somewhere.
Do you, Dan, do you have, or Tony, or do you guys have a recommendation of where you would put this if we're not going to eliminate it? How many years out? And you may not, which is fine too, just because we're kind of hitting you with this, Dan saying one. So if everybody's like, hey, again, because we're not.
It doesn't get appropriated. It's gonna be, it's gonna, you know, the fiscal year twenty-four is the key number. That's what gets appropriated. Board members are probably, you know, gonna be asked questions at some point about out year, especially this year, considering the, the situation with capital. I mean, we just got the BET guidelines Monday night. Uh, that's one of the reasons that we have been working closely with you since then to try to see every other dollar we can look at. Um, but that, that, those guidelines call for a different approach, which is a five-year approach. So I think people may be asked some out year numbers more than usual, so it's just something to think about.
Do you know where Phase Two is listed on here? Or if we just, I mean, I know that's bumped down.
No, the reason I'm asking is, is specific to this.
Phase two for the.
For the stadium. So you would like, Karen, you're suggesting we align it with that, because obviously we're gonna redo the track, we do it. Yeah, no, that's a great. I know, it just makes more sense to, either you, you may not want to align it because you're not necessarily enlarging it, but you either need to have it ahead of, ahead of when you're doing Phase Two or behind, right? And so, I, I don't know, Joe usually would have a good opinion on that. He's shaking his head at me.
If I may, uh, it's sort of two different things. If we do change the track size, we have to redo the track anyway. Resurfacing is something that goes in cycles. I'm sure it's been resurfaced four or five times since your husband went to, uh, Greenwich High, and.
Don't age him.
Of course, well, I will not, but there's a cycle, and we can maybe sneak past another year. And if we need to, because we're under all sorts of pressures, maybe two. Uh, I don't know if we can do two, but we can certainly, uh, uh, try to push it for a year, but these things have to be changed with some frequency. And, uh, I'm pretty sure, uh, the conversations I've had, we're, we're near the end of that cycle, and can we push a little more? Maybe we can. Uh, but we cer- certainly can't wait till a whole nother phase, uh, in, in Cardinal Stadium.
Oh, I wasn't necessarily suggesting we wait for this another phase, because I know we're not discussing enlarging it. So I was trying to time it so that it was somewhere in between those. So that's what I was trying to figure out, the years, because do you do it next year? Do you do it two years from now? You just need a placeholder for now. Just assumption.
Aren't we overthinking this? Can we just remove it and?
Bump it a year, because we bump it a year next year.
All right, bump it a year.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to delete athletics foreigner for the track, four hundred and fifty thousand.
I think you have to amend the motion about, it says delete and put it in next, in the following year.
Can you change your motion?
So I'll withdraw my motion.
Make a new motion.
I'll make a new motion. My new motion is to delete, uh, athletics, four hundred and fifty thousand related to the resurfacing of the GH, uh, Greenwich High School stadium track and pushing that to next year.
Hold on a second. That's fine, I'll second that. All in favor? Okay, that passes eight zero. Michael, by the way, I sent you a updated spreadsheet because I think you had it off a little. One fifty. Maybe I should log on to Zoom here, and then I could maybe share my screen. I can try that in a second. Um, okay. Yeah, Michael. Joseph, yep.
Yeah, okay, so I had, I had a question and then maybe a motion. The, um, Blaze, could you remind us, uh, because we had a lot of questions about it, could you mind talking through item twenty, um, the Julian Curtis line, um, and maybe also what um, your sense of that, and also what, what, what's already been allocated, so we have a sense of, of where that project stands at the moment?
You are asking about the Julian Curtis renovation?
That's right.
The proposed numbers there? Yeah, sure. So the, uh, fiscal year, um, well, previously appropriated, ended up being a, a piece, kind of a piecemeal approach through the BET. Um, last year, the key pieces are that through the ADA program, there's a million dollars for the elevator. And through the HVAC, um, or, or through the, um, American Rescue Plan and Open Capital, there's also the HVAC funding for the gymnasium. In fiscal year twenty-four, what's before you would be, um, this was taken from the study for the school. This is, um, and this has been, you know, kind of through the extensive conversation, especially with the Budget Committee. There is, um, this would be eight hundred thousand dollars for the front entrance to create an accessible front entrance, which it's currently not. It's two ramps on the outside, um, expanding the top step to, uh, so that wheelchairs can navigate the front, and then electrifying the front doors and also, um, adding security to those front doors. Then there's fifty thousand dollars, um, to make up the eight fifty. That is to study, um, engage an architect to design the cafeteria for fiscal year twenty-five's request of two million dollars. That is to address one of the most critical needs there after the ones that we've already, um, discussed with open funding. To, um, resize the cafeteria. It's the smallest cafeteria in the system. Um, so there's a critical need there, and then the out year, the twenty-six, uh, funding, um, was, is for one point two million. That's to replace millwork, um, equipment, sinks. There's also existing funding that's currently in, uh, open appropriation now for an ADA, um, accessible bathroom. That's the approach for the current funding, and then the Budget Committee, uh, talked about, um, putting uh, funding in the out years as well to signal to everybody, as well as to signal, um, to the building committee, um, and anyone that's doing design to have a coordinated approach. Um, and then this could be linked up at a later time with a larger renovation.
Thanks, I, I appreciate that. The, uh, my motion had nothing to do with JC, but I, I thought it was important to clarify. The, uh, um, what, what I'd like to make a motion is actually to strike item eight.
I think you have to say what the item is, Mike.
I like to. The, um, which is the, the, which is labeled equipment, um, on the budget. Okay, right. No, not exterior cranking, actually, equipment, which is the, the trolley system at, at Hamilton Avenue.
Do you want me to do it?
It's, it's number eight on the current sheet.
No, but it's a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Hundred and fourteen thousand, hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
No, so the trolley itself is one fourteen of the one forty-four. So are you trying to delete the entire thing or just the trolley?
The trolley.
Okay, so I can do it. The, uh, I can make a motion to delete the Hamilton Avenue trolley um, for a hundred and fourteen thousand. Can I get a second? Okay. Any discussion?
I would like more information on the trolley.
Uh, Dan, can you speak to the trolley system? One fourteen.
So what we're talking about is, uh, Hamilton Avenue, the mechanical equipment room is in the basement, uh, which is a, a little bit deeper than most basements of the schools we have. It's a very narrow, uh, um, stairway down to the basement. Uh, there was never any thought to, uh, put an elevator in that goes to the basement. So any large pieces of equipment in and out of that basement are rigged in. And the idea was to put in a, 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 a trolley beam, if you want me to explain that, just hangs, hang a, a, a piece of steel, uh, within the stairway that we could attach a, a mechanical trolley to it that would allow us to suspend heavy equipment and be able to rig it down to the basement. Uh, we are talking about looking at a major HVAC project there. Putting in a piece of equipment like this would allow us, uh, safe movement of material, not only during that construction, but for our custodians who are in and out of that basement on a daily basis. This is where we store materials for the school. It, it, it's, it's a nice to have. Uh, I think it would really assist us in, uh, any major movements, uh, in and out of the basement. And we, we've talked about it in-house for a couple of years now, and, uh, we had some people look at it, and that's just a plug number that we put in, but it's, it's not a cheap investment, and it would be something that would could be used forever, so that's why it's in there. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Maybe similar to what we, I don't know if we needed to amend the, the motion, but similar to what we just did with the track, the, um, I think the, the suggestion, my suggestion here would be that the, given the size of this year's budget, this is not a canceling forever, but maybe a postponing to next year, that type thing.
Okay, so I can make, I can, I'll withdraw my motion. And my new motion can be to move the hundred and fourteen thousand associated with the Hamilton Avenue trolley out of fiscal year twenty-four budget and move it to next year. To fiscal year twenty-five. All in favor? Okay, that, all opposed? I'm opposed. Wait, did you vote?
I, I.
All, I, I did not, but.
Okay.
Just because I was typing.
Okay, are you standing or, or you no?
I think I'll abstain for the moment.
So that passes six one one. Okay. Okay, so that's, I don't know if you're following this, Michael. I'll send you the spreadsheet in a second. I tried to share my screen over here, but obviously it went poorly. Okay, um.
That was a reduction of equipment, Michael, of a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Correct. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're telling Michael. It's line eight, row eight. Okay. Okay, so the number now is a hundred and twenty-one million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eleven. Know what he's doing wrong? Do you want me to send you the spreadsheet? Okay.
Uh, he, he's not caught up yet.
Yeah. Um, so here, I'll, I'll, uh, anything else? Otherwise I'll keep, uh, I can. One twenty-one, eight fourteen, three eleven. I'll send it to you. I'm trying to send him the updated spreadsheet because it's different than.
Can I make a side comment while you do that? Another fun thing for all of the people that care about capital, the Hamav HVAC repair is because the geothermal system doesn't work well. So you can put that in the category of, oh, this is gonna be great for the environment, but turns out it didn't work, and it's two million dollars wasted, so. Or it was not wasted to fix it. The original project was ill-conceived. The original project was ill-conceived.
Maybe I shouldn't let you do that again. He'll find a way.
While we're waiting, are there any other motions?
I have a motion. Okay, Michael, I just sent you, sorry, the updated spreadsheet. Tell me if you have it, then just open that one. Go ahead, Karen, I can get this one.
Sure, and I'll, I'll do the motion right if it works. But anyway, I'd like to make a motion to remove the Hamilton Avenue parking garage $200,000 expense from the 2023, 2024 capital to the following capital of 2024, 2025.
Discussion.
Let's get more info. Dan, what do you think about that?
Talk about the pictures and what you guys sent about what the status of the parking garage is, please.
Kim will pull up her screen while Mike's getting caught up. She's got pictures of the garage. The project is two parts. I'll share some information and then I'll let Dan, Dan chime in. You can see the condition of the parking garage. To maintain the condition and its, you know, useful life in a safe manner. This program looks to do two things. It's to make immediate repairs to some of the areas. You can see there's some serious drainage problems in the garage. There's also some repairs to some spalling and items like that that really should be addressed sooner than later. And, and then this also looks at some study money to create a secondary egress, which has been recommended for safety reasons, because there's only one entry and exit point to that garage.
Entry and exit for cars or for people just to walk in and out? I'm sorry.
Why don't you come up, Dan, because you have a lot more information on this one than I do.
So the study for the egress is if you've been into the garage, when you drive your car in, there is a gate immediately to your left, very close to the entrance. If you parked your car in the back corner and God forbid, there was an emergency, if a car caught fire right at the entrance, there's no way out. It's, it's in such close proximity, the two doors. This is a recommendation that was brought on by several, several engineers who looked at it. I think it's, I think it's worth looking at. It may, it may not be able to be done. It may be an absorbent amount is required, but I think we should do a study. As far as the condition of the garage, in my previous life, I led a a company who did concrete restoration specializing in parking garages. What you see here, these white lines that kind of look like paint are actually like, it's calcium. It's, it's free lime that mixes with the water that gets through the concrete and it creates a, like a stalagmite, stalagite situation. What, what, what in actuality is happening is the water is getting through the concrete and in a concrete, a reinforced concrete slab like this, the water is now getting down into the reinforcing bars and you're not seeing that. But the structural integrity of the slab is being compromised. At the very least, I think we should have a study done on it. I know there was some repairs done years ago, but a parking garage is something that needs to be maintained. You need some kind of either waterproof membrane on the top slab or some kind of water penetrating sealer of which this doesn't have, or it has gone past its life expectancy. So you wouldn't normally see that type of condition in a garage that's well maintained. So.
Dan?
That's what the study's for.
Unfortunately, I know enough to be dangerous, but nowhere as much as you know about construction. But I've had, in my experience, situations that look similar to that. That looks like a malfunctioning drain and the drain, the malfunctioning drain has caused, you're saying possible structural problems with the, with the reinforcing steel within the structure. So I, I would certainly agree that a study would be, would be necessary, but certainly shouldn't the drains be addressed immediately? Because if we do find out within the study that the, that the structural integrity has not been compromised, then at least the drains will stop or the corrected drains will stop further possible erosion of that.
That's what's, that's what's in the request. Study, a minor amount, $50,000 in repairs. Yeah, yeah, it was $50,000 estimated repairs. That could certainly take care of addressing the four drains. And then the study would let us know if, if there's been any major compromise.
So with the water that's compromising the, the structure, if it's continued to behave the way it is, it will compromise it a lot more quickly than if we fix the leakage problem. So it's something that the sooner we act, the more likely that we won't have a bigger problem.
And, and that's correct. And if you, unfortunately, the lights here aren't allowing us to see this. There was some kind of rudimentary repair that was done, I don't know, 10 years ago, that it looks like just some kind of patchwork to keep the water from coming in. And alls that did was really make the process worse. You're maintaining the water within the structure. So it, it's, it needs help.
Thank you.
So, since I know there's just, so let me just double check. The funds then are too, were too bold. One is to repair these issues and two is to do, it's not just, it's not just looking for a secondary egress. It's to look to see what else, what other structural issues there might be.
That's, that's the main.
And it's a point should be made that, you know, this is a structure that it's a garage that has a parking lot at the top of it. And so it is being used daily. So it's not just the issues with cars that are parked underneath that couldn't get out. God forbid that there's structural, structural integrity is not there. You know, we have trucks that come in and proper on the upper level that are heavy and parked there and there could be other issues.
And you have circus rides.
I wasn't bringing that up. But my point is, is that it, to me, I mean, this is, we've known there have been issues in that garage. It was closed for a while. And now it's been, you know, repaired and reopened, but clearly from looking at these, there's more issues.
When was it closed?
I probably remember it being closed several, you know, years back, but I could be wrong.
More than five anyway, so. And it's my anniversary today.
It's okay. My, my, my 25th wedding anniversary was on Tuesday, so I think we're going to all have to have a big party. I'm reading this.
Dan, Dan, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the first time we talked about the safety of a structure at a board meeting. And then a few days later, someone external comes looking at it and slaps a close sign on it. When was the last time that the parking garage was evaluated and deemed safe by, by, by someone outside?
More than five years ago, and I'm, I'm trying to get that information because I know some repairs were done. I can't find documents as to when that was done. So I, I'm looking and I'll be in touch with the building department. I don't think it's a situation where somebody's going to come in and close it right now. But I think we need to have it addressed or, you know, it's going to cost us more money later, so.
When was the parking deck built?
That was part of the Hamilton Avenue project. I don't have the exact date, but I believe it was opened in 2008. Is that right?
So this garage is already failing after having?
I'm not saying it's failing. It needs maintenance. It needs to be looked at. Failing is a big word.
It strikes me that this is a safety issue. It's also a potential liability issue. Not that I overly share, but my husband parks his car in a commercial garage in the area and chunks of concrete came down, damaged his car in the last couple of weeks. I think it seems like we're at risk for that sort of thing or things to come down on people or vehicles. So to me, it seems that it's, this is kind of a basic function. So in my mind, I think we need to keep it in.
How many parking spaces are there in that garage?
I, I think it's, I think the bottom level is 26, I believe. And then the upper level is there's handicap spaces, so it's a few less.
Dan, do you think there might be a more fiscally conservative approach to addressing this?
In what way?
Cost less.
I, I, you know, you and I can, you know, two guys in a pickup truck can, can go in and look, but that's the kind of work you might end up with. So I think we need to look at, that's all, I mean.
So the scope of the work, basically the, the number we're looking at right now is, is fixing it and checking it. Can we just check it?
We can, we can do whatever you want. I mean, it's. Yeah, we could do that. So, so the way, the way the money's broken out was he had $75,000 for an assessment and report. We had $75,000 for a preliminary design, which goes hand in hand. And it was $50,000 for preliminary repairs. $50,000 goes a long way, but we still need to have somebody look at it. If we want to push it out a year, you know, I, I don't think it's going to be a huge problem. I think the $50,000 is going to go a long way. And while we're doing the repairs, we might see something good or we might see something bad. I think the study for the the secondary means of egress is something we need to keep on the books, whether it's this year or next year. It's, if you go in there, it's, it's, it's an odd feeling. So it's not like you're in a mall's parking garage where it's open everywhere. You're, you're down to one way in, one way out. And I don't know how it got approved.
Thank you.
Okay, so the question on the table. Yep, go ahead.
It's not really a question. It's more of a statement. So if looking in total and saying, okay, if we want to provide for the repairs, that's $50,000 as opposed to, which would be a savings of 150,000. And I realize that as we go through this, we seem to be nickeling and diming things. But I think what hasn't been said tonight that needs to be said and why we continue to go through this is that the guidance from the BET that has come out says that there's $100 million of capital available for the 23, 24 year between the Board of Ed and the town. Our number at the moment is at $121 million and change. So as we go through, it's trying to figure out where we should spend our money. But I also think that the conversation to be had for the remainder of the evening as well is because we can continue to do this, which we're fine, we can do that. But is, is also a prioritization. Because if we send $121 million to the First Selectman's Office without guidance as to which ones are taking priority and how we do this first, we're leaving it for someone else to decide because we know that the bank has $100 million. That's it. So we need to figure out how we're either going to get to that number or prioritize what we think is important so that when the line gets cut, it's not something that we really, really want versus something that has a priority over the others. So that's why we're going through this, line item by line item with detail. And where we're trying to find the savings that we can, because that's what we've been told. It's 100 million. That's it. That's all we got. So we got to figure it out. And it's, I think it's our job and to do the best we can to either reduce to the guidance or provide a priority to the extent that if something else becomes available, we'll get it. But we have to do that here. So my suggestion then is perhaps repairs need to be done. So I'll withdraw my motion for the removal of the 200,000 and make a new motion that we reduce the Hamilton Avenue parking garage allotment of 200,000 to 50,000 to cover the repairs as provided for in our worksheets.
I would have just put the motion down a little bit differently. I think it's the same idea, Karen. Okay.
Can I ask you a quick question?
I, I was going to say that, yes, you, that your request is to reduce it by 150,000, that therefore 50,000 to study it in fiscal year 24. And if needed, then 150,000 would go into fiscal year 25. You don't like that either, Ms.?
Can I make a suggestion since we're, since we're dialing? Couldn't we do the repairs and give a small, I mean, you know, as we're doing repairs, in fact, efficiencies, it's efficient if someone's repairing it to actually look at what's going on, right? As part of the repair process. So can I throw out a compromise instead of a two? But this is, you can withdraw the motion to withdraw, go from a $200,000 item to a $100,000 item. So you'd have 50,000 for repairs and 50,000 for a study. That's just an idea.
I'm fine with that as well. It's Karen's motion on the table, so.
Yeah, I was just looking. I wanted to see if there was a typo in, in that document up there. It skews the numbers. It's for equipment use. It says 114, but is it supposed to be 144?
No, because we were just hanging up the Hamilton Avenue. The draw. Thank you. Just checking. So Karen has a motion on the table, to be fair. So.
And it was seconded, so.
Right, so all, so you're, just remind me, it was 50, it was, what was it? Sorry.
50,000 for preliminary repairs.
All in favor of Karen's motion? 50,000, say.
What was it?
She's reducing it by 1,000. No, she's reducing the 150, so it's down to 50. So Karen's motion's on the table, all in favor. Okay, all opposed. Okay, so that deadlock's four for. So Ms. Downey, do you want to make a motion?
All right, I'll make the motion as a spirit of compromise with the item for, oh God, I forgot what line I'm on already. For the Hamilton Avenue parking garage and so 200,000 be 100,000, remaining 100,000 with fiscal year 25.
Okay, so I'm happy to second that. All in favor? Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All opposed. All right, seven, one. It's still a good compromise. Okay, so so it's 100,000 out. Okay. Michael, do you have 121714311 on the screen? You do. Well done. Okay. Anything else? No?
I don't know which is the most efficient way to do this, right? I think a lot of the stuff that's in here that we're talking about is, and look, if you were to take out the two made, the two huge projects, okay, the, which are, it's the elephants in the room, which are Central Middle School and Oh, Greenwich. Sorry, I need more coffee. Those two schools and you put them aside and I just did the math. Right? So that's 100, that's, yeah, 110 million dollars right there. Okay, for, for large projects. And then you have, which leaves like 11 million in maintenance, which I know the town has said over and over again that we underfund maintenance and we should. I got all that. And that's, they're, we, and the rest of most of this on here is essentially maintenance. There's a few things that probably aren't necessary to go forward. For example, if you want to look at, you know, the ISD lights, a couple of other things along those lines, but I don't want to get nitpicky. But what I want to understand from the rest of the board members at this point in time is are we going to vote on this in the sense of the total amount? Or are we going to? are we gonna vote on this in the sense of the total amount, or are we going to talk in a dis- and have a dialogue about putting things in priorities of what, how we want to do this? Again, I get to the point of the bank has a hundred million. We're over that. So one, we have to have that discussion and two, we also have to understand that I personally believe if we put forward a budget, a ca- a capital plan with both Old Greenwich and CMS, one of those schools is getting cut. I don't think both of them are going with respect to the rest of the capital. I think that's going to be a tough tough to do. And so I think we need to talk about priorities and how we're going to structure this and what we think needs to happen first. I think also in Christina can speak to this, as to how these schools are going to be ready and what has to happen for them to be ready by the time to put them on the calendar for bonding with respect to the state. And I think that that's an important conversation to be had. And that just is fully transparent to the public and the community at large about how this works.
You want me to dress? I I, you know, to me, it seems like in Karen and I have had discussions like that. To me, I think what we should do, in my own opinion, tonight is vote on this number. And I think we all recognize that we have limitations with Old Greenwich and Central. Um, in terms, I think we should move the projects forward. I think the building committees, they're moving along. I think we don't know because it's October twentieth. Um, and the BET does not vote till the, I believe, the end of March, maybe early April. Um, and I think it's a dialogue. I think as someone said earlier that we, you know, I don't think we can make a prioritization between, I don't want to pick one school versus another right now. And I think facts may blow themselves out by March in terms of which building is better positioned to be ready to go for the following year. And this is part of our dialogue with BET. They say they want this to be a team approach. I think we're all very game to have those discussions. But I think it's premature to have them at this moment in time. And I certainly don't want to be continuing to shortchange all the maintenance in our buildings. What just it it to try to get to a number when there are things we need to do in the buildings. There's ongoing maintenance at every year. Um, the eleven million and change is for our fifteens, if you count having our sixteen buildings. It's not a lot of money, um, of annual maintenance costs. So my preference, and everybody can have their own, um, would be to vote this number forward and continue to have a dialogue as the building committees do their work and and see where we are come spring.
So just on that point, I don't want to pick which school goes first either. Don't misunderstand me. I don't. If if they could both go, I'd want them both to go. And again, I think facts will play out as to see which one is is ready to go at the time. And I think we've all fully committed. And I think it's important to say in public that we are having ongoing and will have ongoing discussions with the BET as to how to prioritize the the schools as they come up, because again, it is October versus where we will be in March. We have no idea what will happen between then and there between getting that done. I do believe that eleven million dollars in maintenance is really not that much money, given the number of buildings that we service on a regular basis. Um, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. My comment on with respect to prioritizing and perhaps that's the ongoing communication we will all commit to tonight is also with respect to the maintenance piece, because you know, if we can't get it if depending on the amount of money we get, let's say they come back and somebody cuts stage renovations, but we really want stage renovations and stage renovations is more important than say, the um plumbing and electrical, some of the plumbing and electrical work. I I I think we need to make sure that that those bodies behind us or after us have enough guidance to understand what's important to us and how we want whatever cuts do happen happen the way we want them to happen. And that's my concern in just passing a number. Um, but as long as we're fully committed to having an open dialogue and figuring this out, I suppose that's okay if the process allows for that. That's a little unclear to me.
Okay, I I can, while you guys talk, I'll say something. Go ahead, Ms. Costin.
I hit the wrong button. So I I want to just um clarify. The number that we have for central right now is a best guess. It's a plug number. None of us love that a plug number is higher than the previous plug number. But what the architectural community is telling us, and we haven't chosen an architect um is and and our professionals on the building committee, you know, are sort of aware that the previous plug number, which did not include soft costs, is not a number that is grounded in economic fact at this time. The the economy and the price of commodities is not something we can help or we can predict. But at this early stage, we do not know whether this building will cost eighty five or seventy five or some other number. We will have a more refined number, I believe, in the spring before the BET and the RTM have to vote on it, because we'll have chosen an architect. We'll have some other information now uh then that we just don't have now. So I and and I just do want to reiterate that the BET guidelines are guidelines. And they are not an edict, and they know that. We should know that. We should all understand that. So um, I and I just, I have to really reiterate that, you know, this number may change based on what is happening. And and as prices sort of normalize for materials, there is some normalization happening. And you know, if I I'm hoping that we are um, in a position that is more advantageous price wise as that time rolls around. So I I don't want to get too stuck in the weeds on this number, because again, it's a plug number. It's best guesses. But it it's not rooted in any um a- a- any bid that we have received. So I I just want to make sure that that's well understood.
That's her.
I was also going to say, I mean, obviously, we're doing this much sooner uh than we have done in past years. We have a couple of projects that are sort of i- i- in the midst of of getting uh actual costs, like Ms. Costin has mentioned, as as well as Ms. Downey and others. Um, but I I would wanted to, it's wanted to address for those who don't uh know, just to have a confirmation. Uh, when the BET discusses this and goes line by line and asks us questions on those two glorious days that we usually sit with them and and go over every item in our budget. Um, and then they they have a discussion and vote. They're not voting on individ- they may have a discussion individual projects, but they come up with a number at the end. And then if we need to readjust uh based on that to to get things done, we do. Is that correct?
No, on capital, it's line item.
Oh, so capital, okay. That's why I was just double checking. So capital's line item, so they they can pull it out. Just checking. You'd think I'd know after all these years, but.
It's okay, operating.
I'm used to doing it all at once, though.
And of course, Fred has a a bite at this one before versus capital, versus operating, sorry, now. Okay, yes, Michael just.
But I I think we do have to change the the paradigm a little here, because I mean, in many ways we should be.
You were muting yourself.
Thank you. So yes, they um, we do. This is an unprecedented budget for for many ways, but many of them are very positive. I mean, we are talking about moving forward on um several projects that, you know, we've been talking about for years and haven't seen any, any, any movement on. And we should be celebrating that. And if one of them has to wait a year um, because the building committee is not ready, there's not enough money in the bank, that they, the issue is we're moving forward in the way that that we haven't. The um, we also have to keep, and this is the the numbers that we're entertaining here um, are is the largest capital budget in the history of the Board of Education. Um, that's, that's a big deal. And the fact that we're also all of us talking about doing that in partnership with other aspects of town government, particularly the BET, not in um, here, here's our here's our list. Now you funded and shaking your fist, which um, um, we know that approach hasn't worked in the past, but instead maintaining and committing to ongoing dialogue while the building committees are doing their work. Um, and while the project unfurls, I think this is, this is really fantastic. And I don't think we, I think um, we, we don't want to lose sight of that um, as we go through and rightly of nickel and dime certain projects that because of the unprecedented scope of this budget, makes sense to defer while maintaining all the maintenance that we need to.
So back to process. So if we approve something and we know that sometime between now and when the BET decides to go vote on the capital budget, we see that our numbers have been adjusted and right sized more appropriately. What is the process for us to then tell them, you know, we said eighty five is actually seventy five, or we said it's a hundred dollars, it's actually a hundred and twenty one dollars? Since we're nickel and dime, I'm going to go with simple numbers.
Right. I I mean, I think that everyone's saying it. We we just, you know, I think there's always an effort to have a continuous dialogue, but perhaps it's hasn't been successful in the past. And I think that, you know, it's a good goal. And I think that, you know, I know that I've I had coffee with Dan Ozz's mirror just the other day. So um, you know, and at coffee for good. So I think that the conversations just continue, the building committees. I know Tony Turner is very active, talking to people. I'm sure Jamie Waters will be doing the same for Old Greenwich. Um, I think when we sent our Ed specs over, we sort of said that we wanted a continuous dialogue with the building committee, which I was told was unprecedented. I don't know why. It doesn't seem like a crazy idea. So um, you know, I think that we just have to make an effort to, and you know, I think the best thing about not being in the COVID world is to continue to meet with people and talk to people. So let's do that.
And remembering too, that we both have representatives, both we and the BET on the building committees, right? So there's regular dialogue. It's not, you know, you have weekly meetings, you're having weekly meetings, there that that there's not a lack of opportunity for communication.
And then maybe we could, and in the spirit of process, maybe when we eventually get to agenda plan discussion at one o'clock in the morning, we can think about maybe putting a placeholder.
Sounds like a plan.
So I just want to make it clear. So if we decide, i- i- if this budget moves forward and it's over the hundred thousand dollars as a- as approved by this board uh, that we also then are making that commitment to to come back and take a look at it. And if there is an adjustment that needs to be made, our that we can do that.
We're 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 going to continue the dialogue. And if it comes back to us, we're happy to take it up.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear so that tomorrow we're not, you know, having people uh concerned that we're going in above or not funding the right.
I think we said there's just too many unknowns at this moment in time. Right? If we had to make a decision tonight based on facts, six months from now, we might be able to do it, but it's it's way too immature. We're coming mature.
Or immature. Yes.
So along those lines, can we make a motion to pass this current with the phrasing that this is an open discussion, an open dialogue, to the extent there are additional it ex- to the extent there are cuts, it comes back to us to have that discussion. I think that's important. I think that sends I I think it sends the right message that we want to send as a board, and I think that should be in the motion.
I think it's cleaner if we approve the mo- appear the capital budget in these numbers as presented. And then we can have a separate sense of the meeting resolution on a dialogue, because I think it's cleaner, because it doesn't convolute the numbers with the intent. And then we can go past, you know, back to back, but it would go for as a sense of the meeting, because it's really not a motion for any particular action. I don't know if you can take motion on something that's not really an actionable item.
No, that's that's fair regarding the process component, but I I think it's important that we do pass then separately a a sense of the meeting resolution that what we are intending is just what we've been talking about, because I think that sends.
Well, it's the same idea as when we've been told that if we pull out something like Western Middle School, it's not, BET hasn't had had a vote to say, if you come back to this, we'll we'll approve it. They've given us their, you know, it's been an understanding to word. And I think that that's it's incumbent upon us to do the same uh in in return with them. Um, you know, to be open and transparent and to work together. We don't have unlimited funds in town. Um, and it is clear that uh, you know, we we have to make some some adjustments, but you know, we're not sure where yet.
Fair enough. I'm I'm.
Jeff. Yep.
Well, I've got to look at it a slightly different way. Um, of course. Basically, I do not want to look wishy washy here. We're constantly being bounced back on projects, which put us into this predicament in the first place, where we have a huge budget, because we didn't take care of ripe projects or projects that could have moved the moved along in the past. So here we are with a giant, giant budget, biggest ever, because we didn't take care of these things before. We're told we're indecisive as a board. We don't know our priorities. I knew our priorities the three years I've served. I presented the same priorities each time, only to get bounced back. So I don't want to look wishy washy. I don't want to say, wow, we're not quite sure what we want to do. This is what we want.
Here, here. These are our priorities. They're on paper. I think.
I was just referring.
I'm ready to call the question.
All right, so the, go ahead. You have to say the number.
The motion was on the table.
But not, well, oh, I'm sorry, with the revised number, but you want me, I have to read it with the revised number, don't I? Okay, yeah. So the motion on the table per the amendments, the revised motion is to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty four capital budget of a hundred and twenty one million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eleven. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. I was just revising. Okay, all in favor of this? That passes eight zero. Well, that's lovely.
I thank everyone, because that that does show conviction. Thank you. That does show conviction by the board. Thank you, everybody.
And that also was um, I think it was smart to do this at the top of the meeting, if I do say so myself. Oh, no, we're not done yet.
Okay, so but when can we make a motion for this?
Well, you're welcome to do one right now.
Well, you won't, you don't make a motion. You just ask for a sense of a meeting. You you can't make a motion for a sense of a meeting there.
Right. So while we continue on with the meeting, I'm going to work with the language so as not to waste time.
Sounds like a plan.
Good.
Next up, is it the ALP report? We're going to discussion items. Let's go, Alp.
Do you need a break? Everyone's going to the bathroom.
I'm not taking a break. You guys taking a break? Okay, can we just go straight to questions? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for having me on the team. Fire away.
Okay. All right, Ms. Hirsch is ready to go.
Ms. Hirsch, I think you've already exceeded your quota of questions for the day.
Well, I sent them over to you, and I know it was uh later than usual, as I was. I haven't gotten a response on any of them. I'm going to ask.
Oh, well, then I need the computer, because we we did answer them all.
Okay, they, I didn't get them before the meeting, so I don't know when they were, if they were sent. Did they get sent? Yes, I was busy celebrating my anniversary earlier this week, which is why you got them late. Sorry about.
No worries.
Twenty five years.
Congratulations.
Thanks. So I don't know where you'd like me to start, but uh, I can just while you're getting the computer.
So if you want to do a run through, run through of the questions, and I'm going to have Ms. O'Regan come up, because she has the comprehensive list of questions and answers. I'll let her run through them. Just to go down uh memory lane very quickly, in two thousand twenty twenty one, I took over this position. And it was just me and Ms. O'Regan. Ms. O'Regan is our ALP facilitator. She is not an administrator. She is in the Greenwich Teachers Union. Um, I quickly realized the demands placed on Ms. O'Regan and had the opportunity, since we were hiring new academic coordinators, to write within their job descriptions a a a small line towards the end that gave them ALP oversight and evaluative responsibilities. So we now have an ALP administrative team that works very collaboratively together with Ms. O'Regan as our ALP facilitator. So I find this is a much more collaborative and comprehensive approach to meeting the needs and demands of this very important program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. O'Regan.
So did you want me to ask or did you have something you want to say?
I have, I printed them out.
Okay, well, I know I can start with. I don't need to ask now about uh the breakdown of information on enrollment because that's a data, but um, basically I was gonna, or you know, I'll get to two E later, but I was basically going to say, we gotten sort of, um, I know I ask every year about this, uh, about the data. Wondering if we've actually looked at student data and done long-term review of students who place an ALP from uh second to fifth grade and those who joined in sixth to eighth, as well as how they compare to their peers in non-advanced courses once they get to the high school. Um, you know, to see what percentage of the students that are at the high school in the honors and advanced courses are have had their background in the ALP program uh at elementary and were joining in middle.
And we don't want this question to go unanswered again. It is our full intent to have it, have the answer question. The answers to the question fully addressed. That said, a longitudinal study requires a significant dive into past data across multiple platforms that have been used the last ten years. It would be helpful for us to better understand the goals of your request in order for us to narrow down the search into one or a couple of specific receipt, researchable questions. We'd be happy to set a time for us to work closely together with Jen Lau and the team to do this work. Once your goals and researchable questions are defined, we'll pre- prepare the information for you. Can we start this in November?
Uh, it doesn't need to happen today. I just know I've, I've asked multiple, so I'm happy to make a, um, make a time to come sit and we can, we can discuss.
We'll make a calendar appointment for November.
Um, so I'm just gonna, I'll dive into, I had some questions specifically based on elementary and then middle that were located here. Um, so I was looking at the graphs uh in the presentation. I see the overall number of elementary students who are enrolled in um language arts has increased significantly in the past two years, which is wonderful. Um, and that's, you know, happened since COVID. So I was wondering what you might have attributed that change to? Maybe it feels to the changes, the interest in the entrance procedures or due to the fact that um, students uh that were enrolled in one section of ALP during COVID were also entered into all three. So do you think the rise in the students that are in ELA in the past two years uh at the elementary level has, is, you know, do you have any thoughts on how that number has increased?
Question three, right? Five. Thank you. We do not feel this change is due to the entrance procedures. We are indeed still seeing that COVID bubble work itself out. The students who are co-horted into the reading ALP out because of math scores are now in Ian, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. As we continue to place new cohorts, cohorts of students into the ALP classes, we adhere to the baseline of the top ten percent in the building and the top ten percent of the district. The ALP leadership team remains confident in the ability of our carefully chosen assessments to place those students who require advanced programming, and we did include graphs in what you will be receiving from Dr. Jones.
So I, that was a lot in one sense. So you don't think it was due to the change in entrance. You think it's basically the, the COVID bubble moving through, which leads me to my next question. So do we have any data to show how the students who qualified for a specific ALP course were enrolled in all three during COVID have done? Um, you know, have they, a lot of these students, you know, US are on the cusp on the bubble. And for years, we've talked about the entrance procedures and students who, who appeal, I have one, you know, uh, to get into a program and then, you know, they are given a challenge and these students excel. Uh, they take off in ways we couldn't possibly have imagined. So I'm sort of looking to see, this is a perfect example of, of a random opportunity landing right in our lap. So I didn't know if you guys have looked at that data to see how many of the students have stayed in those uh higher level courses at the, well, not higher level, but the advanced level courses, the elementary school um due to COVID, the bubble, or if they've gone back to the traditional classroom.
Uh, last year, we outwardly and deliberately offered all families the option to place their students back into the general classroom. A total of fifteen families opted out of math, ten families opted out of reading, that's less than three percent. All other subjects have stayed in and were, and were automatically placed into ALP for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year in their respective grades. This year, we had two students who opted out.
Yeah, can I ask you?
And so, yeah, no, that's fantastic. I mean, I think this this shows the, you know, the power of giving a student a challenge and watching them exceed. I mean, that, that's our, that's our mission and vision uh for the district, right?
I was wondering, since the, since there were so many questions and great answers, maybe um we could just share it with the board tomorrow? And then kind of keep this.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I think it's also important for, if it's just shared that people don't have the opportunity to have a discussion about them. I mean, I just.
Well, then we can follow. I just don't want to, I mean, I don't want to maybe make, if it's like, we're just going to read the emails, I just, maybe we could just share it tomorrow, right? Since you put on a value and you've already responded, we don't need to do that here, right? And you can post it, then the Q and A, right?
Okay, well, I just, I may have some follow-ups. That's why I asked, but, but again, I mean, and we, we don't have to get the answer to this, but I was asking about for all the educational, so the data, you know, if, if we can get some data on how the change is made to the educational block schedule at the elementary schools, you know, the ninety minutes um has affected the educational outcome for students on the traditional classroom and those who qualify, you can send that later as well. And then I have some questions about middle school.
We do want a clarification on what type of data you're, you're meeting. We really have only two years of data and that's not enough for a trend at this point. Um, we really, this year is actually our true baseline year uh with the data. Um, we do now have thirty minute, thirty minutes of science and sixty minutes of math separate this year. Just to remind you of that shift.
Astounding. I can wait for my middle school questions still.
Just wanted to ask about general, like, this is, this is good and tells us kind of what's going on in the program. Do you anticipate kind of jumping to the data point? Like, will we see a separate report or maybe it'll just be in these emails about the data kind of like, because one of our speakers or I feel somebody mentioned about data, um, the achievement data for our ALP students, like we kind of, we got, we had a whole achievement report on the district as a whole. But I think it'd be interesting for us to see where our ALP students were on kind of the state testing and, and on both ELA and math. I don't know if people are interested in that, to see how those students did relative to non-ALP students and just kind of sort of see the impact of whatever. I think that's a good way to see what the impact of our program is. I don't know. It strikes me, um, I do have a middle school question, um. Am I allowed to? Um, just about um advanced science. So I, it's my understanding of the, a very large number of sections of advanced science, particularly I, I know at Eastern um, to the point where those, you know, it's very disproportionate and, and I guess the question is is, you know, should it be, if it's so prevalent, is it the kind of thing that that's not really advanced science and that's just now how we're teaching science? Or is it, I mean, Tara maybe can speak more to this, like how we're, how we're managing our numbers.
Yeah, and that's actually a question. Hey Preston. Um, that's actually a question that Karen had also sent over, so you will get a written response to it, but I can kind of summarize right now. We do have larger numbers of advanced sections at Eastern, which are larger than those at Central, which are larger than those at Western. And that is based on the benchmark criteria that we use for placement. So the first place we're going to look at placement from fifth into sixth grade is going to be the SBA scores. So students who are scoring fours on the SBA math and ELA in fifth grade or in their fourth grade is when we first look at them. We don't always get the scores back in time when placement happens from fifth to sixth. Then we're going to say, okay, it sounds like this student can be successful in advanced science. And then I give fifth grade teachers additional criteria to evaluate them with. So I give them a continuum rubric which lists all eight science and engineering practices. And it asks them to review students' body of work to say, how is this student performing on these eight science and engineering practices to predict how they'll perform in sixth grade advanced science. We have the teachers bring that information to the building advisory committees. And then we evaluate whether or not they should be placed into advanced or on-level science. There are more sections and we're serving those needs at the schools where we are placing students because they end up there on the continuum. I don't want to say that we'll use the same number of sections at every school because we want to support the needs at our schools who need it where they need it. With that being said, we are working diligently to make sure that we reduce barriers to placement. So it's not a, a one-way path. You're in advanced or you're not. For all of middle school, we have on-ramps. You can go halfway through the year, you can go in between years. If it's too challenging and you want to explore energies outside of science and you want to double jump math and take it back and not in science, or you found a new love for a sport, then so be it. It's a flexible model that embraces student choice, parent input, and teacher and administrator guidance and feedback.
And, and just to follow up on that, this is our first year of doing this, this but the designated classroom time, right, for the first time in a couple of years. How are we going to evaluate whether this has been successful for such large numbers of students? Do you have a, a plan for what kind of data you're going to use to kind of evaluate it at the end of the year? Obviously not now, we're in the second month of school.
Yeah, when, when we look at our metrics for evaluating the separation of classes, so we're going back to these homogenous classes, advanced and on-level. We have the eighth grade NGSS test. We also have performance assessments for every unit for on-level and advanced science. And then we look at the placement of students into honors bio, on-level bio and practical bio at, at the high school. Correct. So we have a few metrics that we can continue to evaluate over time.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I think I'm seeing nothing else. If we could just get um all those answers and maybe posted on board docs, that would be a great solution. Okay. All right. Nothing else. Okay. All right. So we get to move on to the next item.
Well, can I jump in real quick with an item?
You may.
Thank you. Uh, Greenwich football wins thirty-seven, twenty-four.
Nice. Well done. Okay. All right. Moving on to the official, thank you, Bonnie, by the way, um, and Mark. Um, moving on to the official enrollment.
I was just going to say, I, it's such an important program, so I'm not trying to drill you guys with questions, just I want to be able to make sure we support you guys.
I live for this. I'm disappointed that we're not speaking further.
Yes.
Put us on again in the spring.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, so the official enrollment update, Dr. Caraballo. Ready for questions. Michael Joseph.
Hi, Dex Caraballo. The, um, so, um, um, racial imbalance, um, which we know is, um, um, has a long history in town and so, and according to the report, uh, the numbers are um getting better in certain areas of town. The, um, I wouldn't, you know, I was hoping you could, you know, opine on, on, on the causes. What do you, what do you think might be some of the, the reasons behind that? The, um, knowing the different steps we've done over the years?
Well, I don't have a crystal ball. But my thinking is, is that there are lots of people moving into town, moving into different parts of town. And that's what is causing some of the changes. If I had that crystal ball, I could tell you.
Right. And I know we talked about it in the email, so, but it's, it's probably more, um, is it fair to say that it's more the diversification of the, of, of the, the town population in general and less the, um, the impact of the magnet programs? Are we seeing an impact of the magnet?
I think it's probably a combination of both.
Uh, I just wanted to say that it is a combination of both factors, but there has been an actual real improvement uh in both Hamav and New Lab over the recent years. So it's, it, there is the effect of the increased diversity across the district, but there has also been actual improvement. It just happens to not be reflected in that specific chart, but astute. Knew somebody was going to pick that up. I, well, I have an additional question on, um, uh, racial imbalance. So I didn't in advance in the meeting pull up the sheet we had on the prior report, but this seems to me that there are different schools here that are in balance and versus where we were at, say, I think in June, when we had our meeting with the state. So is that, am I seeing, am I remembering correctly that now we have different sets of schools here? Because I thought maybe it was Western Middle School was having an issue, but I, I don't remember it being nor Street.
There are a few schools that move in and out over every single year uh out of the impending category. Oh, sorry, sorry.
There were a few schools that keep moving in and out of the impending category. Uh, less, less movement in the actual imbalance category. But much of it has to do with the comparison against the peer schools. So the specific profile of, of their peers is shifting in addition. And so it, it, which we're really focusing on from the state perspective is the the differential, the variance between the two. Got it. So now I know at some point, and I don't have it off the top of my head because I didn't check my notes, that we're supposed to go back. And I've been waiting for the meeting minutes for the State Department of Education to post the meeting minutes from our meeting that we had back in June. They haven't posted them yet, um, which I find very interesting, and I will refrain from comment on that. However, um, and, and this is more of just anecdotal information, but I kind of wanted just to get a general reaction on what we think of this and how it may impact us. That Fairfield County just announced that they were um submitting a redistricting plan in September. And also I think the newspaper had reported that they had even hired an expert in connection with trying to figure out how best to redistrict and knowing that Fairfield really only had, I think, one school that was really out of balance and needed to redistrict. But the question is, knowing that, do we think that that may have an impact on how the state looks at us in comparison? Because they seem to have decided that that was the best approach for them.
Um, so some people may not be aware, but I was the superintendent in Fairfield for three years before I came here. So yeah, so I actually worked on that for them. And when they first started talking about the redistricting aspect and part of the redistricting there is because they don't have uh the facilities that they need for students. They needed to do it anyway. Um, and because they're out of capacity in certain parts of town. And so they're, they were looking at, I don't know what they're doing now, but it's more like a clock where you have to just shift kids. Their beach school is really, really overcrowded. They had another school that was really overcrowded. So they're a little bit different than we are. I, I will say, well, I'm, the one thing that you'll notice here too is how pre-K really impacts. So if we wanted to solve Old Greenwich, we'd just move pre-K up. We would solve it tomorrow, but that would not be best for the building. It wouldn't be best for children and those families. So we're not, you know, unless the board wants to do that, we're going to continue to do what we think is best for children and their families. Um, in, in one difference between us and Fairfield is Fairfield has an early childhood center. So all of their, their students, for the most part, don't get compared um to pre-K, to pre-K sites around the district. Now, I think they have a few now, but most of their pre-Ks are housed in one building. So we, it's really to our advantage that we have these preschools um that have a different ratio because we are seeing more diversity with our youngest learners.
So that, just to follow up on that, so if we added preschool at another school, it would, it, you know, kind of changes the whole dynamic. I don't know if we've really talked about that before, that it's kind of a shifting comparison, that it's your peer schools like middles or to middles and pre-Ks.
That's correct.
Yeah, I don't think we've really talked about that before, have we?
Where you place pre, pre-K, if you have a choice, you need to be strategic when you're thinking about um this racial imbalance challenge. That's also why, I mean, Fairfield has two high schools, right? That's also the problem, whereas we have one, right? So that's why we don't, right?
So Christina, to your question, the schools that have pre-K to five are measured against one another, and you're correct. And then the K fives are measured against one another. The three middle schools are measured and then the high school is separately.
Right. I don't think that like, you know, over the course of time, that's really, and it's emphasized, it's always like comparison to the district number as opposed to comparison to your peer school numbers.
I was going to switch gears for a second, but that's only if, okay. Um, the uh, just to get credit for watching the video, um, you mentioned the, in the video, Jen, that the high school is not necessarily seeing a decline. It's just that not as many kids from sort of with outside the, our current system um came in. Like, sometimes we get kids that just come to high school and they come through our middle schools. I assume that's.
I assume that's because Greenwich Country Day opened a high school, ding ding ding. That's our assumption.
Both of those facts are true. I can't prove it. But they were listed right after each other.
Right. So how many? How big is their high school? What's their class?
Uh, they're, I think, at ninety. Or they're ninety for per class, per grade level.
Oh, yeah. Oh, like I said, I just did the video. You have to read it too. Yeah. Okay, Michael Joseph.
So speaking of the report, so there were a number of comments about, and obviously there's always a lot of community comment and concern about enrollment, is enrollment going up, enrollment going down? The executive summary of the reports suggests that this reports that the enrollment is dropping slightly, and let me make sure I have all this correct, right? So it's been dropping slightly. Where projected change is another one forty six students down next year. On page, at the beginning of the report, it says that this year's drop was fifty one, I guess, at the, in the, the third bullet of the executive summary, this year's drop was fifty one. The, I was wondering where that number came from, because if I look report to report.
Yes, I did see your question on that. The, do you want to answer this? Okay. The report statistics that I give you in the enrollment report are based on our preliminary poll to the state. When I give you next year's report, I use our official statistics from the state, which represent adjustments that occur between the October third and whenever the state closes to declare the official number. So I will always pull the official state statistics. And those can continue to be adjusted because this week, I will actually be making adjustments to two years ago's numbers.
Oh, so as far as, so when we're looking at actual students, our best census right now is we're down fifty one from last year and projected one forty six for next. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Hersh.
Well, I mean, I guess it's more of a statement, but I, I know, you know, you were talking about the, about overall enrollment. And then we know it's sort of based on the outgoing to all and incoming kindergarten. And I, I kind of think it's fascinating when I look through these numbers. If you look school by school, there's increases in enrollment in areas where you wouldn't necessarily expect to see them. And Parkway's up this year, which is glorious. And, you know, there, you know, we've added another section of pre, you know, other sections of pre-K, which means that most likely some of those students who might not otherwise attend kindergarten and public schools might now continue to do so, and, and those numbers in kindergarten are rising. So we've seen an increase of families moving to Greenwich that, you know, but we still haven't seen the impact of the housing that's coming. You know, due to COVID and, and, you know, what other impacts there might be. So I just think it's interesting to, to sort of look at that. I know we've, we've asked and mentioned that public, private schools like Country Day School are pulling from us, but now that they've, they've been offering, you know, opportunities for students to be able to go over there and parents are pulling schools, students that are younger as well to go with an older sibling that's been offered a specific opportunity. So I mean, I just, I know enough people that are doing it. So I think we just have to be careful that we don't look at our enrollment figures sort of in isolation. We have to sort of look at these trends i- in multiple different ways. And I, you know, it's very difficult. I mean, if you look at the numbers from the high school this year, I think it's actually fascinating. The year before, we, we lost students between, I think, ninth and 10th grade, which was unusual. This year, we've actually seen an increase when you see the grade nine, ninth, the ninth grade moving to 10th, 10th, 11th, 11th to 12th. Every single one of those grade numbers has increased from last year's enrollment figure. So it, to me, that's, it's a, when you look at it, our numbers really aren't down as much as you would necessarily think, and it's, it's little pockets. So I think it's, it's kind of interesting when you look at it that way.
But let's, let's, let's not confuse the public because the, the trend, enrollment is down over eight hundred students over the last, you know, few years. If you look at the trend, if you look at the trend on page fifteen, we've gone from a high of nine thousand seventy six in twenty eighteen to twenty two forty eight. The, we, it's, we're, we're, we're short eight, we're, we're, and the projection is for it to continue to shrink. They, we just, there are pockets where enrollment is not decreasing, but the overall enrollment trend over the last decade is down.
That's true. That's factual, and it's also being looked at. Again, you have to consider that you're looking at that in isolation. You're only looking at our numbers. Later in the, the document, you can see the charts. We, we used to get these incredible reports from John Curtin, wherever he may be. I beg him to come back to take a look at this. And he was always on the nose. You know, you see the trends in the state, you see the national trends, you see birth rates. The things that we don't look at are the pieces that I, I'm talking about. We're looking at this in isolation. We're looking at our numbers. You have to compare those to the state, the nation. You have to look at birth rates, but what we're getting is we are seeing increases in grades that you don't traditionally see them in. And that's why I'm saying it's an interesting thing to take a look at it as you're looking at those, those types of trends, because it's, it's unusual. You don't typically see increases in the middle point of high school where people are coming in in that way, and it's not just one student. So you know, that's why I'm saying to me, I think that there's, there's other ways to look at this, and we're looking at it in isolation. And, and I think that that's kind of key, you know, again, preschool students coming in may be continuing, which will increase the size of our kindergartens going forward.
I was just going to say the other thing is that we've reduced a lot of sections as a result of that declining enrollment. Let's not forget about that. And also the special education increase really increased our costs. So okay, Ms. Downey.
I just want to follow up on the kindergarten point because I'm, I'm, I'm kind of intrigued about the whole thing that we're fifty nine higher than we expected. And I don't know if you have a breakdown. I mean, we kind of see how many each school is above or below by projected, but you know, fifty nine kids more than we expected. And, and I did watch the video too, and you made a point about those kids were not born in Greenwich. So I guess, so I guess similarly for next year, you know, how do we, what data can we mine with the nursery, you know, the preschools to, to help our budgeting and help our planning? If we think we're going to have fifty nine, you know, an extra sixty kindergarteners again next year, it, it would be helpful information. And I don't know if there's a way to capture that.
I actually just got started on that very, we do that every year. And I just received information from the very first preschool. It takes a few months to gather, but it is a, it is an early indicator for us. And I had, right, brought this to Tony's attention last January, February, I think, that the sense, early census looked high.
For this year?
Yes.
And so you'll, you'll next year, you'll get a sense of where we're going for next year as well. Great, thank you.
Sorry, Joe.
Thank you. Tony, I, I brought this up, maybe a year ago about enrollment where if you're thinking about a corporate plan or planning a business, you plan for extreme movements, because I can imagine the way things are right now, if our projections are off to the upside, pretty much status quo, we can handle a few more students. If things go as predicted, well, we're kind of moving along, keeping things a little as the same. But if we for some reason take a turn to the less students dramatically, what are we going to do? And I'm not asking that as a question now, I'm asking that there's somebody who, who follows us and writes stuff in social media. And he keeps making reference to me saying this about a year ago, where we have to, we so, yes, but we really should kind of consider what will have, at what point, if it goes beyond projections or lower than projections, at what point do we make dramatic changes? And, and mapping that out would be an intelligent business move. So I know we talked about it last time. We had enough time basically to think about it. So I think it'd probably be prudent right now for us to actually put a plan together where if we do hit a certain number, certain actions take place. So I, I think it'd be fair if we, we ask you to put something together like that in the, in the near term.
In, in the way that I see it, it's really part of the operating budget. I think the challenge that we have is like, if you look at like page twenty one, people only focus on those numbers and not the other aspects of the school district. And, you know, I'm going to use pre-K as an example. We have enough pre, pre-K sections right now that we fill a parkway of classrooms. So we've lost all of those classrooms out of our elementary rotation. They're across the district, but they're no longer available for K five students. So as pre-K continues to grow, and we have made aggressive adjustments in pre-K, trying to slow the growth of adding sections, but I can tell you right now, I spent the first hour this morning. We're already going to be full, we believe, right after winter break this year. We believe next year, we're going to need two more pre-K sections, which will be section fifteen and section sixteen. And that's all part of the planning that goes into it. I think probably the biggest question we get, because people only look at these numbers, they think that you can do something like close the school. We need a pretty dramatic shift to be able to do something like that because the other programming is growing. And people, people are not looking at what's happening in these other aspects of program that take a full classroom. Our special education, just in general, special education has gone from eleven percent to fourteen percent. Those teachers have to have classrooms to teach in. So we, we have some full-size classrooms that have two and three teachers teaching in those classrooms. They're not available for a kindergarten or a third grade classroom. So I think it's all part of the operating, and when we get to the operating budget this year, we can certainly talk about that even more. But it, I think it's part of the planning in, in where staffing is and how we adjust staffing.
But if I may, you, you know, I'm an optimist and I do like your optimistic, optimistic response. But that still doesn't answer the question hypothetically, if we make an extreme case. If two thousand of our middle school kids left the district, would we have to shut a middle school? Well, the answer is yes.
We only have two thousand.
That's why I said, that's why I said it's an exaggerated example. So therefore, what I think we have to do is to plan ahead, whether it's two years ahead, three years ahead, whatever it is, we have to realistically put a number that as we getting closer to that number, yeah, obviously, as I said, it'd be an exaggerated example, two thousand middle school. But if we lose five hundred middle school kids, for whatever reason, would that be the number we'd have to consider closing a middle school? And if that is the number, we should know that number just in case it moves in that direction. So we could defend the fact we're not closing a school. And of course, we're not talking about closing a school, we're just using that as an example. But if we certainly reach a number or getting closer to that number, we've already planned that number for a closure. Or if the number goes higher to a certain level, just to tell both the good side and the bad side, if it goes higher by a thousand middle school students, well, we'd have to go rent some space somewhere, wouldn't we?
Yeah, I think, I think, but again, it's not, it's not as simple as that because it's not just the five hundred students, it's where are the five hundred students? So if we, if we are over capacity at Eastern and you, we're all of a sudden under capacity at Central or Western, it's really about redistricting. I mean, that, that's the key. It's not about actually closing one of the schools. So it, it really depends on the situation and we can't predict with any certainty, really, what's, what's going to happen five and 10 years out. And if, if we had that capacity to do that for projections, whoever that is would be a millionaire. Every school district in the country wants to be able to do that.
Make it myself clear. I'll try to say it again. I'm not asking for a prediction. We have the predictions. They're already there. We have that data. But what we don't have is if we reduce by a certain percentage, I'll use percentages this time rather than numbers, then at that point, we'd have to take action. And if we increase by a certain percentage, we would also at that point have to take action. I understand redistricting. I understand there are certain things within the projections. But if we fall outside those projections, we probably should make a number or a percentage decrease in students that we have to take action. So as we get closer to those numbers, we're at least prepared or start preparing the public to, for that to be one of our options. Without, with the void of that information, as we possibly, if we do possibly approach those numbers, everyone's not prepared for hitting those numbers.
I understand. Ms. Costin.
So I don't know if any of you were watching the BET meetings as closely as I was. But in their i- in their recommendations specifically related to the Board of Education, they cleverly disguised what they were directing us to do. But they want a plan for the consolidation of our schools based on our falling enrollment. And I think, you know, consolidation means redistricting, closing, basically moving children to schools that are not their neighborhood school anymore. I mean, let's not beat around the bush. We've got to be very open about what has been suggested to us. I don't know whether it's they're directing us to move in that direction or they're requesting that we do it. But the seventy five percent of parents who utilize our schools, this is a deeply personal issue for them because they don't just buy a house. They buy a school community in their neighborhood. And, you know, no one ever, you know, tapped us all on the shoulder and said that neighborhood schools are the most efficient way to deliver education. But it has been our model. And if we're being directed to change that model, it is a huge departure and one that our community may not easily accept. And, you know, some of us are old enough or seasoned enough to remember what occurred in like twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. I remember being in this auditorium screaming at a podium because we hired consultants to do this. We hired Malone and McBroom to, you know, take up this issue. And, you know, we had overcrowding at Glenville. Like I, you know, Karen and I keep saying, if you build it, they will come, and they came. And so Glenville was overcrowded, Cosco was overcrowded, North Street didn't have enough students, Parkway didn't have enough students, and New Lab had too many, you know. The only thing that changed, because parents were so irate and angry that we would suggest uprooting their child to a school that was elsewhere, was the fact that nothing happened. Other than New Lab got a, a new school to accommodate their students. So I think learning from history is, is that, you know, spending good money to fire up and stress out a community of parents just does not seem you know, the best way to go about this, just because, you know, the BET says that inflation is a problem and we need to save money. I mean, we have to really consider what we're being asked to do and what it means to the community at large.
Okay, Ms. Hersh.
I was going to point out, I mean, this is a topic that comes up year in and year out, right? And, and I think it's exceptionally important to understand when you're looking at the numbers and you are looking at them in isolation. You have a drop of students in one school and in a one grade by two or three students. And another school, different grade, a drop by three or four, or a drop of one or two students or five students doesn't mean a drop in educators. It doesn't mean we need to redistrict and close a school. And, and as, you know, Michael Joseph mentioned earlier, that there are trends. And so some of us are not seasoned enough to have lived here long enough to have lived through the closure of Parkway years and years ago. But you know, I have many friends who still live in town who were here and part of that closure. And the town at one point basically said to the, to close it and then to reopen it costs a significant amount of money to reopen that school, and they would never do that again. I, I think the fact of the matter is, is just because we have a couple of seats in one classroom here and a couple of seats in a classroom there, and there's a minor change for a year or two or even five years, doesn't necessarily, it's not a discussion we shouldn't have. But it doesn't also necessarily mean the sky is falling. And one change like that of to redistrict or to move is a lifetime change. It's not something that should be reactionary to an immediate four or five year trend that will go back up. That is exactly what these trends have done year in and out. You see, it's like, it's a lovely little wave. And ultimately, yes, people, seventy five percent of people in town that take advantage of our public schools are buying into a community. But the other twenty five percent of people who have students in private schools and those who don't have children, either they've graduated or they are, don't have children, you know, in general, are also buying into that same community and property values are based on those schools. Once you start moving students around, you know, it's, it's a very, it's a very sticky wicket. And I'm not saying it's not a discussion that shouldn't be had at some point. But it shouldn't be reactionary to a, a five-year cyclical change.
Cody.
We wanted to think outside the box, another interesting avenue to explore would be turning one of our schools into a charter school. Because you can fund those at a fraction of what normal schools cost. And it might have lots of other benefits for the school district, just since we're talking big picture stuff, but I'd throw that out there.
Ms. Costa. I'm going to make a different suggestion than Cody. I'm going to say we keep our pre-K numbers artificially low. I'm gonna say, we keep our pre-K numbers artificially low. We turn paying families away year after year because we don't have enough capacity. And if we want paying customers to come into our schools and they are clamoring for spaces because we, we have far more applicants than we can accommodate, we should look at turning one of our schools into a, a pre-K campus, maybe, Cody. Lots of paying customers.
If you charge enough, but I doubt that, I don't know what the numbers are if they cover their own costs, but. So to look at.
As, as, as much as I appreciate this, this big picture conversation, the, we do have a agenda here.
Okay, so, and, and this is a huge part, obviously, of the operating budget. So I think that we should maybe continue this conversation then. Is that fine with everyone?
Okay. Yes, but I just want to put out one question, which is, and, and forgive me if I didn't see it in here. But we have had a trend, speaking on pre-K, that our pre-K kids are not going to kindergarten. And we haven't had the same numbers from pre-K to kindergarten, from what I understand. We've seen, we haven't seen the same numbers. So our pre-K kids are in fact going on to kindergarten, because we've talked about in previous years, there was a discrepancy on the number of pre-K kids versus kindergarten kids.
They're, they are all moving. The four-year-olds are now in kindergarten from last year.
Okay, so we are, is that a hundred percent that are moving on or is there a, a decline? That's what I'd like to know.
We'll get that information for you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Moving on to the technology program summary, my understanding is Mr. Ting is unfortunately quite ill, right? Okay, so maybe we can accept this as just a written report?
Yep.
Okay.
Same question.
And then we'll just send questions to Ting. Sorry to hear that. Okay. We'll send them to you and then if you have questions, okay. Central middle school update, Dr. Jones, I think we've had it from, okay, from Ms. Costa. Western middle school soil update, I think we've had it as part of our capital discussion. So I am moving quickly now. Financial and staffing report, please.
Hello, everybody again. The financial and staffing report is before you. This is the monthly report. This is October's report, so this is for the period ending September thirtieth. Since this is the first monthly report of the school year, this would be for the first quarter. Nothing at the moment out of the ordinary and following the, the standard format here. You'll notice that from the fiscal year twenty-two year-end report on capital, we now have the additional appropriation from July first, so you'll see that added back in. That was, that takes us up to the, on page six, you'll see that the total capital request, open available capitals, forty-seven million. And excluding the building committee on the cover page is the forty-one point eight million. So that's the open capital. The operating budget, you'll see the number, the percents right now are between twenty-five and thirty percent spent. We're about a quarter of the way through the year, so, so far, that's looking good. We are watching closely out of district tuition and settlements as well as working closely with food service on school lunch and trying to monitor what the financial situation is going to look like and, and work with them to see when they're going to run out of funds for the free lunch program. I'll take any questions.
Yeah, we just, because while we're talking about the lunch program, so where are we in terms of, I know we gave all the free lunch and COVID. Like where, where's, what's the status of the lunch program? Because I know it was then people had to certify, but then when the deadline for that was, it feels like it's kind of moved around a little bit. Can we just get a little clarity on?
Basically, we've just been told when the money runs out. Have they given you any updated information?
We're, we've not gotten any updated information from the state. When we recently met with David, we're still, they've had people certifying. We're still shooting for maybe a little bit later, but it, at the burn rate, it's looking like November to maybe early December, we're going to run out of the funds and we'll have to transition. I know that Anne and David are working on a communications plan to be ready to go for that. But that burn rate looks like, we, we don't have clarity from the state on the guidance, but it's mid-November, December on the burn rate.
Okay, so I have a, a couple of questions and you and I had a great conversation earlier this week, which I appreciate. So one of the things I think I'm still looking for i- in what I'd like to see is the, the amount of capital that is including of the building committee capital, so we can track that appropriately.
My, my mistake.
No, no, that, no, not a mistake. I'm just, I don't think the rest of my fellow board members have heard it and I think it's, so I'll make that. But I'd also like to understand the deferred amount, what's been deferred and then what's been canceled and then kind of understand why it's been both deferred and canceled. I also think it would be helpful, and this is something we hadn't talked about, is tracking from a capital perspective, those projects in which we're using Essar and ARP funds, because those, one, can't be deferred and can't be canceled. Otherwise, we're going to have to explain why we need to return that money back to the government. And that's not a conversation I don't think anyone wants to have. So I think it would be helpful to understand where we're at specifically with those projects.
Yeah, we're going to look at adding, just Dr. Jones actually asked us to add for next month's report, the American Rescue Plan capital funding status, so we're going to add that to next one, month's report. After we spoke, we do have, I, I, we got about seven point five million dollars in American Rescue Plan funding. The current available balance of that funding is five, about five point one million. So that, that appropriation so far. And most of that appropriation is for the HVAC work, so I'll have a report for next month specifically. We actually, we have that broken down by school by HVAC project.
And that money for those funds, I'm sorry, so those funds need to be spent by the end of the school year of twenty twenty-four or calendar year twenty twenty-four?
The funds from the American Rescue Plan, we still have, I think it's still twenty twenty-six.
Oh, it's twenty twenty.
It's longer for us than the town.
Okay.
Yep.
So, okay, I just think we should not lose sight of it and make sure that those are on target, because for all the reasons I said earlier.
And I know that we're trying to get our head around current capital, but I was working with Dan and Dr. Jones. We're, we're having facilities, especially now that we got out of COVID. There, there were some projects that are deferred and there was a slight buildup in open capital, I was speaking to Dan about this in preparation for this meeting. But that, that piece, now that I think we're out of COVID and all the, all the mess that was with contractors and the school and everything, he's ready to kind of hit the ground again and get running. And Dr. Jones and I asked Dan to prioritize the oldest capital accounts first that are open so that we can burn up the oldest funds that we still have. We still have some funds, you know, for HVAC you'll see from, when you're looking through this report that were allocated three fiscal years ago. And so it's try to use up the oldest money first where the projects matter. A couple of the deferred projects when you're going through were, are, there's a lot of money that's basically the biggest reason for the deferral is, was COVID nineteen and it's kind of reorganizing and getting, getting our head around things. Dan is also currently down a project manager at the moment, so he's looking at a temporary option to make sure that we can keep things on track now that we're out of the COVID season and can hopefully hit the ground running. But next month's report will include a American Rescue Plan capital funding breakdown for each project.
And you just pointed out to me that the appropriations is also on for December first.
Yes.
Yep, yes.
For the upcoming fiscal year twenty-four, yep.
Yes, Ms. Hersh.
I just had one quick question. I noticed, I just put the document away. You know, for, you have funding there for focused on learning, I think it was a hundred fourteen thousand. I just wanted to check, that, that's Todd White, right? It's Todd White and his consultancy. And I, it just mentioned that it was for training sessions, I assume is that professional development and that for? Matt, I just was curious what the?
That's for professional development and I may defer to Anne to provide some specifics.
That was for the English Language Arts and Social Studies work that they did and that they continue to do.
So goes directly into strategic plan and other goals. Great, thank you.
Hey Blaze, I'm just going to be a little general on this question. I understand some of this COVID money that we get, if we don't spend it, we got to give it back. Is there any chance we won't spend some of this money and have to give it back?
No.
Thank you.
I think, I think we'll be spending all the money we can.
Thank you. I wanted to hear that.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much, Blaze.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. All right, we are going to action items, but my understanding is we're not going to be taking up the strategic plan tonight, is that?
And not as an action item, yes. They may be a, a brief, maybe a brief discussion, but probably worth talking about a little bit.
Okay, the only reason I raise that is because I do feel like the super goals kind of go with that. And we haven't really, I know personally, I haven't had a chance to focus on it since I've been so focused on capital.
That was, yeah, we, we, you know, four members of our board are very involved in the budget and it's been a, it's a tight squeeze to get that done for tonight. And the strategic plan is such an important, you know, part of our next five years and, you know, operating budget will be tied to that, superintendent goals, all sorts of stuff. We wanted to make sure that you guys really had the time to look through that and share feedback so that we can provide you with an actual plan outside of just the goals that are, that are here.
So maybe we, if, we can give comments tonight, I mean, I think on the super goals, if we have comments, let's just send them to Dr. Jones. But as for the strategic plan, if people want to give comments tonight, great. If not, maybe we should actually commit to sending our thoughts to the committee.
So let me get this straight. Action items, number seven, we're deferring A and B?
Correct. We're, I mean, we can discuss them.
I'm good. I just spent five days in Vegas, got back leg last night, so I am kind of losing focus right now, so I'm very good with that.
But did you win in Vegas?
To, to, so to Joe's, so Joe's point, right, the strategic plan, if there's anything that we want to make sure that we have board owner, complete board ownership of and thoughtful conversation of, it's the strategic plan. And I don't think, just look at the time allocation of the meeting this evening. If we're able to devote, you know, twenty minutes or so to whether or not the research is to track this next year, we should be making sure we're devoting enough time to thoughtfully consider the strategic plan, if that makes sense.
Agreed. Ms. Downey?
Wait, so we're, we're, are we going to discuss them or we're just discussing whether we're going to discuss?
Yeah, I mean, if, unless you really need to talk about something tonight, I think it's best if we send comments and?
I think there was just one point I wanted to make in the strategic plan was a minor net, so I'll, I'll send in writing, but just one thought I had was we have a family and community engagement consultant for the district and it would seem appropriate that perhaps she should be consulted to work on that strat, if we're going to have that as one of our goals, perhaps some input from someone in, would be, it would be just looking at them and maybe giving commentary. I just seem to me like would be a good use of time.
Point taken, seems, okay. All right, so, yes, did someone have a hand up? No, oh, sorry. Okay, my peripheral vision is fantastic tonight. Okay, so I am going to move to seven C. I'm going to put this motion on the table to approve fiscal year twenty-four tuition and fees as presented. Is there a second? Ms. Downey, thank you. Blaze, this is just the a three percent increase or something, is that correct?
Yeah, this, this is a second read. This is no change from the prior meeting when we went through everything. That would be a three percent increase as discussed last time and nothing's been changed since the last business meeting.
Any questions?
I just had a ten-second comment. I, I know we briefly touched upon this, but I think this is just a toss into the board. When we get down to summer, to the summer school, a discussion on the agenda at some point in the coming future, that, that last page with all the, the great courses that we offer over the summer, I don't think we've offered a lot of those secondary summer programs for, for a while, all of the courses that, you know, that are non, what's the word I'm looking for? Not for credit recovery, so I, I'd love to add that when we, when we go to, you know, the acceleration and some of the other courses, you know, that are interesting, that students who want to learn and take their time over the summer to delve into some subjects. I think when we get to the summer school discussion, I'd love to bring that up. As I'm mentioning it now, it's because it happens to be in this document and I'd like to make sure that we make note of that.
Dr. Jones?
You know, and when we were talking about this in the operating budget, I mean, I think it's a point for celebration, but the demand for some of these courses is not what it used to be, because we're actually providing it during the school year. The way that we're managing for our advanced students, the new programming where our kids go from all three middle schools to the high school, so they don't need to do those courses in the summer to get ahead, because they're actually getting what they need and like it's in eighth grade. So that's, which is good, but it'll be interesting to see what happens going.
Well, then it's still a discussion for summer school, because then we can adjust that, those course offerings, because we have them there, but we're not actually offering them. I just know, I mean, some of these are some great programs that, you know, the more we discuss, the more kids might be interested in earlier.
All right, motion is on the table. All in favor? All right, okay, all, that'd be hard. It passes eight zero. Thank you, okay. Agenda planning, fun. Oh, do you have a sense in the meeting?
I do. And I will admit, this has gotten comments from four members of the board already, so I tried to be diligent. I'll read it. It says, it is the sense of the meeting that we, the Greenwich Board of Education, recognize that the fiscal year twenty twenty-four capital budget that we passed on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two is unprecedented in size. The budget reflects the priorities of the board, which include two major building projects, Central Middle School and Old Greenwich School. We recognize that the pricing of these two projects are, are our best estimates at this time and likely will be revised once the building committees for those projects progress farther in their work. We commit to working with the Board of Estimate and Taxation to discuss any necessary refinement of the capital budget as these projects move forward.
I'll second it.
Can I just ask one question? Okay, sorry. Why wouldn't we sort of say, and the building committees? What, you say that we're going to work with the BET?
I think we're, yeah, we have, we have representation on the building, and the building committees are going to do their work, right? I mean, I think it was just more, we're talking about unprecedented, right? Like us and our dialogue with the BET, whereas we always have a dialogue with the building committee because we have representation on it. I don't know, it's an answer.
Okay, that's fine. All right, that was my only net. Okay.
I'm just curious, what's the purpose of this?
I think the, the purpose of this is, one, in passing the budget as we did, it's to acknowledge the fact that one, we may not get everything on that list and somebody is going, and, and the fact that the two projects going forward at this point in time, we don't have a firm number as to what they will be, nor do we have confidence that they'll both go or should both go or the ability to both go. And it gives us one recognition that we will be continuing our discussion with the BET as to how to manage those two large projects as we learn more information, because as Ms. Costa had stated earlier, as I think, also, you know, Mike would agree with Old Greenwich, that the numbers we have aren't set in stone and how that may further impact the budget going forward with respect to the rest of the capital, particularly if, for example, Central Middle School comes in at a number far greater than eighty-five, if we have it, or even if Old Greenwich comes in, it's how do we manage that from a board perspective, rather than just the BET making decisions, but rather it's an open dialogue on how to handle the increased costs or different numbers with respect to those two projects that are really driving the larger number that we approved earlier this evening. the larger number that we approved earlier this evening.
I think that's more than what's actually in the wording. The wording is basically that these are our priorities as we voted on them tonight. We realize how it's significant and we're, we're saying we will have discussions with the BET going forward as the process moves along because we don't know where these numbers are.
But we're just saying the same thing we're gonna do anyway. So I don't see why we have to make any sense of the meeting based on something we're gonna do anyway.
I think, I think it's, I think it's worth communicating to the public at large that this is not the end. This is not the last word that the Board of Ed is gonna say on it. We're gonna continue to participate in this. Given the unprecedented nature of the budget, the, this is gonna be an ongoing process that we're gonna continue to move forward over the next six months or year in a way that we necessarily wouldn't have in years past.
That's the part I
If you go back a year, what was it, fifty-three percent of our proposed budget got approved, some number like that? What's different last year than we're gonna do this year as far as being a percentage of our budget, our capital budget not approved? We're gonna be working with them the same sort of way. I don't, I don't understand why it's any different.
Because the numbers are big.
Versus, the numbers are big and we've got building committees that are, that are all running and giving in a way to giving, giving, giving the building, we've got building committees that are cranking numbers and, 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 and giving more of a sense than we did. Last year, we didn't have any building committees. Currently, we have, well, we had a few, we had the entryway, but now we've got three more building committees up and running, which we did not have.
But we are the building committee. We have a representative on each of these building committees that, of course, we're gonna work with. I mean, it's just, and I don't mind making a statement of what we're gonna do, because we're gonna do it anyway. I just don't see the reason for it.
I, I mean, I, I guess I, I understand. It just feels a little pedantic or something because I do okay, it's like my least favorite thing.
This on to a vote so that we can talk about our November meeting.
Call the question.
Okay. She did, Karen did, yep. Did you, I'm sorry, Karen, you can't say anything because she called the question.
Well, I have my hand up, but that's fine. I, 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 I'm just trying, I, I was trying to get reading. There was something when you read it that stuck in my brain and I was trying, I needed to go back and look.
She's taking notes, you have to read it back to her.
So I just wanna, you know, I think it's, we commit to working with the Board of Estimate, estimate, estimate and taxation to discuss any necessary refinement of the capital budget as the projects move forward. You know, I, it is, I just want to make sure that it is clear that we're talking about those two projects specifically, right? Kind of read and, and think at the same time. It's like walking and chewing gum, I can't do it.
I think it's clear because in the sentence before that, we've identified that there are two major projects. No, that, that School and Old Greenwich School.
And I understand Joe's point as well. I mean, we, we, we put this forward, but you know, anybody that knows me knows I'm perfectly happy to go shopping and buy the shoes in multiple colors if I like them. But we are being, you know, we, we have to put forward that we're being good, you know, stewards of, of the money that is, is being given to us by the town. And so I I think that this is, you know, signaling that we want to work to, to, to move these projects forward. But, you know, do it in a, you know, as, as best we can.
Well, I'm not gonna be against it, but I'm not gonna be for it, so I'll just abstain. You guys could do as you wish, so that's how I'll end up voting.
Sure. Okay.
Well, it's not a vote, it's a sense of the meeting.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm pondering, okay. Okay, I'm, all in favor? All right, all opposed? Oh, seriously? All abstaining? Here, okay, let's, let's redo. I'll vote yes, because this is silly. Okay, redo, reread it or recall the question.
I'm trying to
I'm gonna do a bipartisan thing. Recall the question. Can you just say it again? Whatever, just the sense of the meeting. Okay, all in favor? Okay, so four, all opposed. Okay, so that's five, all opposed, all abstaining. Okay, so five, zero, three. There you go. That's a good way to end it. Okay, so now let's go to agenda planning. Okay, we're going to add sense of the meeting resolutions to all agendas going forward.
So may I suggest that the strategic and superintendent goals come back in the November business meeting?
Yes, after budget, yes. Okay, so November sixth, wait, you're saying now?
That's fair, okay. Can we do, well, can we do strategic plan first and then super goals later? Because frankly, strategic plan should come first. So could we do that in the November sixteenth business meeting? Hasn't she given all her input and everything? Isn't it really down to the board here at this point? Right? Okay, so why don't we do strategic plan if all are okay in November sixteenth? Right? And then the super goals can come back in, I don't know, December is fine, right?
I just, a- as a point of order, we should probably discuss, when we're discussing the goals, how, you know, the timing for that next year because much like this, you know, strategic, you know, the, the school improvement plans, when you get them like mid, mid-fall or late fall, the year's already started. And so I know Dr. Jones is probably working on a lot of these goals already. So, you know, for next year, I think we should be planning them before she starts her, you know.
Fair enough. Okay, and then Ms. Costa, you had something for, sorry.
I'm gonna jump in, you know, that, if, if the entryway comes back to us, I guess we could tandem that to the central meeting, depending on what it is, and it could be in all facilities, building night.
And so you actually think Central Middle School can't fall on one of these other times? Because you could then, oh, the fourth, I was gonna say otherwise you could have just added
Budget meeting, makes more sense, no?
To present. But wait, when are you meeting with them? Not until the fourth, you said? Well, why don't you get back to us, see if you could, if, if it worked to do it with the budget, that would be great. Okay, but let us know. Okay. All right, CMS, okay, anything else? Anything else? Okay, can I get a motion? Ms. Costa, the second.
Motion to adjourn.
Favor of adjourning. That passes eight zero, no one wants to abstain? Okay, great. Okay, good night.